Here we go. Alright, let's get started. Okay, I would like to call the order. Uh, December twenty first, regular school board meeting, we are having it virtually. Cause we don't want anybody to be in the bad weather. So we decided to do this and for other factors that Danielle knows of. Roll call, Karen, could you, Karen, could you please call roll call?
Yes, Tamika Bukovic.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Carla Pennington Cross.
Here.
Andy Franklin.
I was on mute here.
And Ben Wen.
Here.
Okay, item one C pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag anywhere, people? Alright, I'm gonna have to get the flag. Please bear with me, I'm gonna try to find an American flag for us. There we go, I will be sharing my screen. Hopefully it works. Ah, there we go. Can I share my screen, uh, Karen?
Yep, you should be able to now.
Okay. There we go. And we will pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. The United States of America.
Into the Republic. One nation. Alrighty then, I will stop sharing. Let's see what number we're on here. Sorry, I have. I've been taking care of a sick husband and that's worse than having five children. We are going to mission and benefits, uh, beliefs, I'm sorry. And I'm bringing those up now. Okay, as part. As part of the greater Glendale River Hills School Community, the school district will lead in creating a supportive learning environment to inspire all students to strive for excellence. In pursuing a strong and academic foundation to succeed in and contribute to the global community. Change is an opportunity for growth. Carla.
Oh, sure. Each individual has a unique potential to learn.
High expectations, effort and motivation are essential to learning.
Cooperation, communication and collaboration strengthen our homeschool and community.
And we believe diversity is an asset.
Alrighty then. I would like next to make an emotion, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Danielle Bailey.
Second.
I think I heard second by Andy Franklin.
Oh man, third.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, zero, it looks like that was, uh, five to zero, motion approved. Next, we will have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Which includes, hold just one second, which includes the approval of financials, approval of minutes. Secondary readings of policies that we went over that we didn't have any issues with in the forklift of replacement. Do I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
Moved by Carla Pennington Cross.
The second.
Second by Ben Wen.
Wait, I have to ask Ben.
Thank you, assertiveness right now.
Any dis- well, discussion Danielle?
Um, I just have a question, I didn't know where the right spot was, but the policy second readings has a policy that's also included in new business. It's for professional development for licensed staff. It looks like they're the same policy to me.
And I, yep, I apologize Danielle, so, um. That was the one where you, you had had some feedback around it. So if you're okay with the language, it could stay in consent. And if you're not, I wanted to be able to move it out.
Oh, I got you. I, I was okay with the language. There's a typo at the end, I think just missing an end.
Okay.
And I'm okay to approve it as long as you, it's, it says, we'll provide the. Review update as needed. It's just missing an end update as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with. Hold on, with that minor, so that is just a minor typo error, so I don't think it needs to be pulled. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, so that was the one I had a question, the, um, that same sentence that Danielle asked about. Uh, it says DA shall present the annual development, is that present to the board? Is that what that sentence is?
Yes, yes, I can clarify that and add to the board.
Yep, so that is just one word, also adding, it doesn't change anything of it. Is that correct Carla?
Yeah, just clarifying, it's to the school board.
Yep, so please, uh, add the, that to it. Um, any other small clarifications? If there's anything other than that, we're gonna pull it out, but if it's nothing, then we will. Continue to approve it under the consent agenda. Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. That is five to zero, any nays, abstentions? Motion passes. We are honor roll. We are at. Three A, family survey results. Take it away Allison.
Alright, so as you know, um, we wanted to implement some surveys this year. There's a family satisfaction survey, so this is just the first year, and then there'll also be a staff engagement survey. This year, uh, we reached out to Donovan Group, um, for many reasons. Uh, I was going to attempt to do a survey on my own, and then after a superintendent meeting, there were a lot of really good reasons to have a third party support you with your survey. So I reached out to Donovan Group because they did our ESSR survey last year and our communication survey last year. Um, again, it's a benchmark, so got lots of feedback this year, um, on questions and things before we sent the survey out. Uh, but definitely have some additional feedback even since the survey went out that we'll take into account. And we'll make adjustments as needed for next year, but I'd like it to be an annual survey so that we can track some growth and some progress. So Perry is here tonight. Just to go over the entire report was in the board packet, but then Perry has a short presentation where he just pulled out some of our. Areas for celebration and then our areas for growth so that we can focus it on those. And action planning. So, I'll let Perry introduce this all.
Thank you Allison, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen everybody, so, and then you won't see me, but, um. I'm, I've got a script over here to the side, so, um, hopefully everybody can see that, um. So again, good evening, my name is Perry Hibner, I'm the lead survey strategist for the Donovan Group. It's great to be with you virtually, I thought I was gonna be there in person tonight, um, and then Allison informed me to decide to go virtual today. I can't say I'm complaining because it's snowing already in Middleton, so it'd be, it's nice not to have to drive back in through that, so. But, um, I'm looking forward to sharing the results and analysis from the recent family satisfaction survey. We administered on behalf of the Glendale River Hills School District. Before we get into the slides, I wanted to provide you with a little background information. We worked with approximately twenty-five districts in Wisconsin administering surveys, surveys over the past year. Districts often like to use an outside third party to administer surveys because it provides a layer of anonymity for those taking the survey. Also firms like ours hold the data rather than the district, which can be beneficial in cases of open records requests. This is the first year, as Allison has mentioned, we have administered a family satisfaction survey for the district. As such, the data we collected acts as a benchmark or a baseline for Glendale River Hills for future surveys of this kind. We always begin by reminding districts, the survey isn't a scientific sample. As such, it should be treated as qualitative data that is similar to data from a large number of focus groups. Because we used a convenient sample, it would be methodologically inappropriate. To carry out what we call a regression analysis or attempt to calculate error. So again, during the most recent Senate and gubernatorial races. When you'd see a poll from like Charles Franklin with the Marquette poll, saying that there's plus or minus three, like Senator Johnson was ahead by three points, or Governor Evers was ahead by two points. That's regression analysis. We don't do that because we offer it to everybody. And from what I've heard talking to other firms that do K twelve public education surveys, um, they do the same thing. Because again, all of our families, even though they don't always respond, wanna be able to have the opportunity to participate. I will note, over the years, we have found our survey results to be very indicative of what residents, staff members, or in the case that. Or in this case, Glendale River Hills families believe about the questions and statements provided. We are supporters of public education and certainly are happy when the results from a survey are positive. However, our number one goal is that the results are accurate. I've been told my analysis can be overly positive and that might be the case. But I believe if that is the case, it's because the results of any particular survey suggests a district has a lot to be proud of. There, that's, that's certainly true here, there's also areas for improvement. You will see, we kept the survey open for a little less than two weeks. A window of ten to fourteen days is standard when administering family surveys. The district used social media and email to encourage parents, guardians and caretakers to complete the survey. We had, oh, I think I bumped two slides. We had two hundred and ninety-nine respondents complete the survey. I'm often asked if there is a certain number of completed surveys needed. The answer is no, although based on what national survey firms have told us, a good response rate is twenty-five to forty percent of the total number of students in a district. You can see based on that number, we're, you know, between twenty-five and thirty percent. We also use seventy percent of strongly agrees or agrees as the barometer for a good score on a specific question or statement. That number is certainly somewhat arbitrary, but I asked our firm's president, Joe Donovan. Who used to work for the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction along with school perceptions. And handle data for each organizations about using seventy percent versus sixty or eighty percent. And he said, um, that obviously any district can look at the data and decide if they think seventy percent is too low or too high for that matter. I will know Joe also indicated almost all districts we have worked with over the years, and I've only been with the Donovan Group, I think I mentioned this to you last year for about eighteen months. Um, but over the years are very happy to, if they get seventy percent or higher on most questions or statements in a survey. Finally, slide floor, slide four, this one shows the number of questions and responses that were above ninety, eighty or seventy percent. Along with those that were below seventy percent of strongly agrees or agrees. You will notice that this adds up to forty-two, although I indicated on the previous slide that there were thirty-six. And that's because there were a handful where we asked for a school specific response. So there are numbers for Parkway Elementary School and Glen Hills Middle School, which you saw in the draft report. Finally, um, a few other things before we go into the slides, the other slides. The survey contained five demographic questions, three qualitative or open-ended questions or statements, and twenty-eight qual- quantitative questions or statements. Allison and I have take, talked multiple times over the past few weeks. Reviewing the data and discussing which questions or statements would be included in tonight's presentation. The next nine site slides all highlight results that were very favorable. While the following four slides cover statements or questions that show areas for growth. The final two slides include themes that we found from the open-ended responses. Please note that with about ninety responses to what are the strengths of the district, along with eighty responses for what can be improved. Most of the themes listed were only listed two to four times. I don't wanna make it sound like they were listed fifteen or twenty times from what we heard. Okay, with that, and again, I, I'll, you'll see that there's the analysis on the bottom there, but these are the questions we decided to pull out that where the scores were gen- were, were positive. So my child's principal was responsive and addresses concerns effectively. So you can see that. What I like to do is boldface at the bottom, the combined strongly agrees and agrees. You can see at Parkway Elementary, that number was above eighty. Eighty-two percent, Glen Hills Middle School, that number was well above eighty-nine percent. Um, as far as the analysis. This is a very strong result. This is higher than we see in most districts. This indicates principals are doing good work and respected by families. I feel bad because I didn't think you were gonna be able to see my analysis in the bottom, so I will, I told Allison, I, I looked at three districts where we have done. Family surveys over the past few months. And while I don't wanna name those districts, um, the scores for those three districts, and I only looked at questions that were identical, not even similar, identical. So the scores for those three districts were between eighty and eighty-three percent. I think you can see one on the bottom there, hopefully you won't keep looking at that one, because again, I'm trying to hide the names of those, but, um, so. Again, um, your scores were. On the high end of what we've seen for other districts. And when I say comparable, they're either districts that were PK eight. Or they're district similar in size. So it, it, for example, I also knows I used to work in Middleton Cross Plains, I think I mentioned that last year. That wouldn't be a comparable that I would think would be relevant because they're quite a bit larger and also a K through twelve district. So I am able to share concerns or and or feedback about the school district. I will note that one thing too, every district, when they work with us, they get to determine what questions are on the survey. When you work with national firms, this is one thing Alice and I talked about ahead of time. They pretty much tell you, you have to use all the questions that they, that they use for a particular type of stakeholder survey group. Um, the three districts where we've done these surveys of late, none of them asked this question. And that might be because they, it was one that they didn't feel was appropriate for them. Or in many cases, it's because they're trying to limit the number of questions on a survey. We try to keep surveys somewhere between thirty and forty questions tops. Because we find that if we ask more than that, we get a lot of drop-offs. So you can see eighty-six, almost eighty-seven percent. Um, again, because this wasn't school specific, we looked at it from a district level. Again, this indicates the district is open to suggestions from adults who have children in schools. And this creates, often creates additional goodwill and understanding, which can be important as you're looking at satisfaction levels for your district. My child feels safe and welcome at schools. One thing I will tell you is this, this score is very high typically at, in all districts. And I, and I know that there were some questions, is that really the case? But the reality is, is that we are in public education doing a good job of, of keeping children safe and making them feel welcome. Um, and you can see you're above ninety percent in both of those. Um, the district that I, that I have listed there is at ninety-eight percent, but at the same time, the other ones were in the upper eighties, low nineties. So again, comparable. Maybe a little bit lower than some, but comparable. Allison, I'll go ahead and admit somebody, I think they just showed up here, so.
I got it, thanks.
You're dead, and that's not why I wanted to stop sharing the screen, okay, alright. Um, so my child enjoys going to school. So again, this is higher than we saw with the other three districts where we've asked this question. Um, and it's higher at both schools, okay? So again, slightly higher at your elementary than at your, than at your middle school. Again, another example of these are strong results and studies have shown that the levels of excitement, engagement decrease. As students, uh, progress through public education. So for the fact for it to drop less than. Four percentage points going from elementary to middle school is a strong showing for the district.
I, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah Danielle.
Looking at the numbers real quick, so. When you combine strongly agree and agree for Glen Hills. Twenty-two and sixty is eighty-two, not ninety percent, is that right? Am I missing something?
Yes, it looks like that's right, and it looks like I need a remedial course in math, so. Um, I will make that change for Allison, because I shared this presentation with her, so you've got it. I know it's not a part, part of your board packet, but in case you wanna use it in other ways. But yes, um, that, that is right, but still eighty-two percent is, is a good score. Um, and not surprising, and I, I, again, because again, we see engagement levels going down from elementary to middle. Thank you for catching that Danielle. If you catch anymore, please tell me. My child feels accepted by students at school, and thi- this can, this can range. I mean, of the three other districts, we had scores as low as, as at the middle school level within the mid-seventies. Um, we tend to see it be pretty close to ninety or above at the elementary level. Again, not surprising, I know there were some questions because we had a question there about bullying, and, and at the middle school level, I believe it was somewhere between one and four and one and five students. S- has said that they had experienced a form of bullying at some point over the past year. So it's not surprising to see that if, if that is the case, that they don't, maybe don't feel as accepted by students there. But again, to have almost ninety-one percent at Glen Hills and above ninety-five percent at Parkway, a strong result. And not surprising, because we said these first few would be strong ones that we'd look at. So accepted by adults, and you would think that this would be high, because again, that's our job as adults. Is to make children feel welcome, but it can oftentimes not feel the case. Cause again, kids wanna make sure that there's an advocate for them somewhere in the building. It may not, it may not always be a classroom teacher, may, maybe it, it may be an administrator, it may be an administrative assistant, it may be a parent educator. But they want somebody who they feel like is going to back for them. But again, to have more than ninety percent, um, is higher than we see in other districts, although not the one you can see there, it's, that's between, um, what Glen Hills had in Parkway, but again, solid. Um, now, we're at the four questions that Allison and I talked about where the scores were lower. And that, um, the district, she would like to make these areas, area, there are areas for improvement, part of the, an action plan going forward. So the first one. Or no, I'm sorry, I'm not quite there yet, my bad. God, I feel like I'm off tonight. I'm, I'm sorry, maybe it's because it's cold in my basement too, so. Um, the school district is meeting, meeting the social emotional needs of my child. So again, very high at the elementary, it is lower at, at the middle school, but again. Well above that seventy percent benchmark that I mentioned before, so again, a good result. Maybe one that you could certainly try to improve at the middle school level. But again, um, we've had to do a lot of a social emotional work over the last couple of years, so, um, certainly I'm sure the district's planning to do more. So, the superintendent is willing to listen to the concerns of parents, that's a really high score. So with the three districts. That I looked at, we didn't have any scores above that eighty-one point nine four that you can see there that, for the one district that's, that's mentioned. So that's nearly seven percentage points higher than them, and it's more than ten points above the other two districts. So again, that means again, families. Sometimes they don't know what school boards do, they don't know how to, they don't know how to get a hold of superintendent, or the superintendent can feel like that they're removed. I don't think that's the case here in Glendale River Hills, so. Um, so there were three, three questions specifically about the school board on the survey. And one of the things I always note is that school boards, um, it can be hard for, for families to answer, parents to answer. Um, what the school board does, because, you know, usually you only hear from them if they're really, really happy or really, really unhappy about something. So, um, but they do understand that you have the challenge of dealing with district budgets and also what the mission and goals are for a district. So again, having eighty-nine percent, that's really high. I know you can see the one district there, that's almost twenty percentage points higher. Than what we saw with one of our other districts, and the other two districts, I think were around seventy-five percent. So, um, a- again, it shows that they appreciate the balancing act you face as board members and the work that you're doing. And with that, sorry that I jumped the gun a little earlier. These are the next four, the four areas for improvement. That we, and again, there, you can see it's partly because the percentage of combined strongly agree and agrees are lower than the other ones we saw. But again, they're also, I think, areas that Allison and her team have been talking about anyway, in terms of action. So. I'm able to find information that I need on the school or district website. So, I will tell you, every survey I've done in the last eighteen months where this question is asked, whether it's of staff. Or families, it's one of the lowest scoring ones. And it's usually somewhere between, I would say fifty-five and seventy-five percent. So whether that means that we all need to do a better job of hiring, and I used to be, I'm a retired communications director, so hiring better communications directors. Or, or what have you, I'm not sure. But, um, we need to make our websites easier to navigate. Easier to understand. Um, and, and then make sure that families know that that is the case, because certainly, and there wasn't a lot. There wasn't anything specific in the qualitative comments, it was just more I have a hard time finding things, okay? It wasn't about specific things, so I can tell you that, but the reality is, is that, um, you know. Your, your families, and it didn't matter which, which school, but they felt like that the, that the websites could be better. Next one, the district or school communicates positive news about my child to me or my child. And again, I don't wanna say that these are awful numbers, but these are numbers lower than you saw in so many of your statements or questions. So the result is, is again, and, and, and mainly, maybe it's because of my background as a communications director, but when I was in Middleton Cross Plains. When we would do surveys and we did them in-house, because large districts, so we had a lot of resources. We always looked at lower scores as an opportunity to engage our families, in this case. More about what we can do. So one of the things Alan, Allison and I have talked about is just doing that. Engaging families and finding out, okay, when you say that you'd like to find out more, is it, is it simply that? You know, our staff isn't doing that enough, aren't we doing that enough at a district level? Should we be doing more with our newsletters? How, how would you like to get that information? But again, I think this is a real opportunity for you as a district. So that next year, when this survey is offered to see this number grow, and what we typically see everyone is, when, when districts. Put action plans in place to improve areas for improvement, they, the goal is somewhere between five and ten percent. So if we could see these grow to, let's say, low eighties to upper seventies, depending on the school. I would feel like that's a really, you've had a strong year. You're not gonna see twenty percent growth in one year. That's just not the way surveys work, but five to ten percent is a realistic goal Allison, so to keep in mind, so. Um, my child is challenged to his or her full potential at school. So I'm gonna just read from what I have down below here on this one. This statement can often receive a significant number of disagrees or strongly disagrees. More than seventy-six percent of, you know, you can see that more than seventy-six percent at the elementary school. Strongly agreed or agreed with the statement, but it dropped to just about sixty percent at the middle school. This was the lowest result for the school on the survey and provides an opportunity to engage families. With children at this level to find out how to address those challenges. The other thing is, um, and again, I'll just go ahead and put those two down there. You can see that while the smaller school had a pretty high percentage. Um, and again, we actually did, we, you know, we, we actually did student surveys for that district as well. You can see a district in your neighborhood, which is larger, no doubt about it. But that they were low, they were between the two, two numbers. So, and the third school that I referenced in some instances didn't ask this question. So I don't have it, I don't have a percentage to be able to share with you there. And then finally, and I think this probably goes hand in hand, right, with the last question. I understand the academic expectations at my child's school. So you can see a large gap. This was the largest gap between either the schools in terms of any question or statement we asked on the survey. So not quite twenty-five percent, but certainly at the middle school, there. And whether it's again, and I, and I'm not trying to, you know, make any assumptions or jump any conclusions, but whether it's, you know, as, as children get older, or sometimes we say. They, I mean, I'm a parent of three kids, we told our kids when you got to middle school, yours, not that you're on your own, but again, there's, you're, there's expected to be a little bit more responsibility that you take. Whether that's the case and parents are feeling like they still wanna hear more from the district than, than they're getting, I'm. I, I don't know, again, I can't say that there were specific comments about it in terms of. You know, what, you know, what they wanna know about academic expectations, but certainly this is an area where. Uh, uh, um, an action plan and some steps to try to improve at the middle school in particular, we could see some real growth in the next year. So, then we ended. The survey with what are the strengths of the district, and as I mentioned at the start of this. We did have nearly ninety responses, and these were the five areas where, like I said, we didn't see any of these like ten times. But we saw more than two, somewhere between two, five or six times. So. Again, much as you, when you talked about at the beginning, your, your, your mission, and everybody in each board member read, read one part of it. Um, the fact that you're inclusive, diverse and progressive was, was certainly something that was brought up, uh, multiple times. Positive and welcoming environment, dedicated educators. Good variety of class offerings and quality curriculum. And one that, and again, I think this sort of addresses a need, but at the same time, it says, there's been efforts made to address problems that exist. And like, you know, again, that's, I would say with any stakeholder group we surveyed, that's what they wanna know. The last thing you wanna do, and Allison and I have talked about this before, and we've had districts where. I always say to them, if you're gonna take a survey and just put it in your top right-hand drawer, don't bother doing it, don't bother offering it. You know, share, share the information, celebrate your successes, but say what we're gonna do to move forward, because that's what people wanna hear as well. And then finally. What needs to be improved, and again, not quite as many responses, um, but at the same time, quite a few. And again, more than two or more, but not, let's say ten, I would say the, the first one was the one that I certainly saw the most. Timely, consistent and improved communications. More challenging curriculum, including additional opportunities for advanced learners, I think we saw that three or four times. Addressing behavioral issues, including the bull- bullying, which came up a few times. And then continued mental health and emotional support for students, but also for staff that was brought up by your families, so. Um, I know I rushed through that a bit, but I also promised Allison I would finish my portion in fifteen minutes. So you'd have time to ask questions, and I know you have other things on your agenda, so. I'm sorry if I talked really fast, it's a habit of mine, especially once I get off the script, but. Again, if you have questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer.
Thank you, uh, I thank you for the presentation. What we're gonna do now is see if we have any. Questions from the board. You can just mute and, um. Ask your question. Going once.
Well, okay, I don't know about.
Comments, questions, whatever, yeah. Yo time to talk Danielle.
Okay, okay, well, um. No, I just, I'm, I'm coming away with, I'm, I'm processing, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I think I'd like to hear e- either from you Perry or Allison in terms of like. What's next? So these action steps, these suggestions, like the first thing, like, uh, the themes coming to me, family engagement and communication kind of. You know, ring, are, are bolding or emboldened for me, which makes me. Think that it might be beneficial to have a follow-up in a communications committee meeting, um. Around some of these big themes, family engagement, improvement of communication district website. So I guess I'm wondering, uh, what our step as a board is in terms of checking back in around like, what are the action steps you plan to take? Based on this survey information. When do we talk about this again? When do we talk about this again in that realm?
Um, I would agree with you. I think communications is a really great place to take it, because even some of the other questions around, like I understand the academic expectations for my child. To me, that's, a lot of that's a communications piece, or I'm receiving positive information, like so many of those are tied to communication. I think that'd be a really great first step to bring it to communications, maybe um, start talking about what two or three we want to focus on, and then coming up with action steps around those would be how I would see us moving forward, so that families know too, we're focusing on these three areas. Here are the action steps who are really transparent that we're doing something about it.
Yeah. And um, the open-ended responses, are we able to look at those in their uh, in all their candor and glory, or are we not able to see those?
I don't know, Perry, if you want to talk about both sides of that.
Be happy. I know if you wanted to say anything.
I can see it, but.
Danielle, I will say that that's one of the questions I hear quite often from school boards after I do a presentation, and the answer is yes. But I'll also tell you the, the pros and cons, if you will. So, so the pro to it is, is certainly, yeah, it allows you to kind of, you know, see and and kind of pair up with some of the quant, obviously this report is mainly quantitative. So, and I can also certainly black out if, if, if Allison and the board are okay with it. You know, like, for example, when specific names are mentioned, because one thing we don't want to, we do hear is we, we guarantee anonymity, you know what I mean? And I'm not saying somebody says that they took the survey. I mean, like, for example, if they mention somebody in particular, you know. But the one thing I will say, and some districts say no, because of what I say now, they don't want it. Is the minute I pass it along to you as a school board, it becomes part of the Glendale River Hills data. And so, so if somebody for, let's say, they could have the best intentions, or they may have nefarious reasons for wanting to get the information, gets a, makes a request for survey results, you have to share anything I've shared with you.
So I have to just interject here and say that at the school board, when we have an agency to report, the last thing that I want to do, and I don't mean to sound sharp-tongued about this, but the last thing that I want to do in the middle of a public school board meeting, it's talk about how I don't want to look at the results so that I don't have to as a school district provide that to other people who might be curious about what it says. So I, I honestly, I, I don't mean to, to kind of bad. I, I liked a lot of what was in here, but frankly, that is not convincing to me, and I think that we'd be shirking our job as board if we don't, you know, have to look at those things. Clearly, if someone wants to look at these results, and to the extent that they mention personnel, we can redact those on our own, and I think that that would be more than fine. But I am a staunch advocate that, you know, we don't frankly, we don't hire someone to do something so that we don't have to be accountable. And I now, I understand why you didn't give it to us yet. I understand the board didn't make any action. And I'm going to double down, and I'm going to say, I know you didn't mean anything by it. It's just one of those sensitive buttons that I have. So I apologize i- i- if, if there's any implication there. It wasn't my intention at all. But I just want to be on record as being staunch advocate of having the district maintain this.
I'm gonna come in a little bit about this. I I think, Andy, I, I, I understand your point, but I really think the only reason and you correct me if I'm wrong, Perry, is to, for the imminency of the people who are taking the survey. So they feel like they are able to share openly. And if they do have comments about us or about the staff or, or whoever, that they can openly and honestly talk about it and say it without repercussions or.
Their anonymity should be protected. Yes.
So I, I get that. Is Perry, is there a way? Is there a way? Well, I think we should, we should actually discuss this as a board, how we're, we want to do this, but you know, if we want to get this or not, it is not on the agenda. So I think the information is good. We don't have any action item on this particular thing on the agenda, but I think Perry, hold on to that, because we're probably going to be having a discussion about this to decide if we would like that information, but it is, I, I'm not trying to blow you off or anything, but it's not on the agenda, and I don't think there's an action item on this particular thing.
It's, no, it's all good. I mean, and, and, and let me, because I think you were going to ask a question there to me, and Andrew, let me address yours a little bit as well. We can certainly, so I would suggest two things if you, if you want to look at the open-ended responses. One is not only that names be redacted if they're brought up, but also, I mean, I, I can go through all approximately a hundred and seventy comments. And if they're, for example, if I fill out a survey and I sort of kind of give the impression that I've got three children at the middle school, and I include that, that in some senses gives away my anonymity a little bit, right? Because you might be able to figure out who that person is based on what they say. So, so that would be my, that would be my only thing is I don't, I wouldn't want to share any information that'll, and it's not that I have any questions or reservations about you or anybody else, but I would say that I think it's in your best interest not to know who took the survey. That's all I'm saying, okay?
And I, you know, and, and just to be clear, I, I would absolutely, you know, agree with redacting the names of those took surveys. I don't need to see that. I don't want to see that. And I think that a parent took the survey with the assumption of anonymity. But I think that when they answer questions, they expect that the result was answered to be viewed. I, I mean, I would, and, and it's unfortunate that we don't have an action, because I would think we might normally, you know, vote to accept, but when we address this in the future, you know, I would, you know, I, I, I would advocate for turning over the full results to the board with the, you know, redaction of, of the names, either to be held, which probably the smarter thing to probably be to have the superintendent's office, you know, have unredacted copies of everything. But but maybe just keep them with you and not with the superintendent's office. That I don't care about, but I think with Tony answers the question, and they say I have two kids in this grade and that grade, I don't think that's revealing, you know, their identity. I, I just don't.
So I'm going to, this is a, I wanted to, I want to bring it back to discussion of the results. We will bring the, I think we can do, what we can do is bring this to a future board meeting to talk about what we want to do, the r- r- results, and also maybe even talk about what Danielle said in regards to what are our action items from this? And maybe we can have, you know, a conversation about that, but knowing what to do with the survey or not right now, I don't think this is the place.
Open the door. It was just a question.
No, 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 no. It's, it's a good question, and it's supposed to be, and I see where Andy, definitely, Andy is coming from. But we just, it's no, it, like I said, it's, it's an informational discussion. It's no action item on it. So we'll have to bring it back for an action item. To go to talk about it. So I know, I see it. Uh, Allison, you can go next.
I was just gonna say, I don't, I think I have a pretty clear understanding of what you guys would like, so I don't see there's any reason why I can't work with Perry. I'm getting that information without it having to be like a board action, is all I was gonna say. I think that could just be something that I get together.
Yes and no, because you don't know how I think, you haven't heard how Ben thinks. I have some different opinions on what this is. So I think it needs to be an action or an item discussed, because I do have some back and forth on both of it. I agree partially with Andy, but I also partially agree with Perry, so I want to discuss some of that.
Okay, that's fair.
And again, whatever you decide, just let us know. I mean, it's not, I, I know you will. And, and, and it's also my understanding that I'll be back here in, in less than a month, right, Allison? Because we have the staff survey being offered at January thirteenth to the twentieth. So. So again, it might be an opportunity to have this conversation about both surveys at the same time, if you will, about what you might want.
Right, perfect. Carla.
Oh, am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're unmuted.
Okay, so I'm just gonna move on to something else then. I, I also have an opinion on whether I should have access to the data, because Allison, as you know, I asked for it too. One of the areas where I think it's problematic to not get the, the narratives is where teachers have been given shout-outs. I think it would be really good if you have that detail on, on why people are valuing particular teachers. As you know, I, I think you should use that data to for staff development, if you have particular teachers who are giving real strong support to students.
And yeah, that's something I totally, I was gonna request from Perry, because I agree with you, that I want to be able to show people. Yeah.
Also to use that for development, you know. So as, as I'm understanding it, Allison, you've got these, these four question responses that you and Perry tagged as kind of the high needs areas identified in the survey. Web info, positive news about the kids, whether my child is challenged to their full potential and understanding academic expectations, right?
We just chose, yeah, we just chose four to present. Those don't have to be the ones that we decide to have action steps on. So we could, or we can pick something else. Yeah.
Just wondering where that was headed. All right, but it sounds like it's coming back next month, so. I will save my thoughts for then.
I, I have two more.
Have any specific, but Carla, do you have any specific questions on not if the information is going to be released, but specific questions in regards to the survey itself? Because that can be asked.
I shared my thoughts with Allison already.
Danielle.
Just from, sorry, from Carla's comments, two things came to mind. One, I would, I would pinpoint the, I'm satisfied with the quality of information I receive. I think that, uh, from the Glendale River Hill School District, I think eighty percent, like twenty percent being dissatisfied, in my opinion, is not great. I would pinpoint that as an area for opportunity for growth, in line with, again, our communications, effective communication, et cetera. The other thing is, so we're doing a staff survey. We have this caregiver family survey. Perry, do you ever do student satisfaction surveys?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I told Allison, we did three for one, one district. We did, we even, I was a little surprised they wanted to do elementary, because some districts do and some don't, but middle and high school are pretty common. We do, we, we've got a template that we use. We have about, I mean, there's, there's about fifty, so the way this works, Danielle, is we have a, we have a bunch of templates, and then so I'll, in this case, I shared it with Allison, and we kind of, we kind of decided what questions made the most sense for your district. Every district being different, but yeah, we do. So, because that would be one that could be done as well. I, you know, you might want to say, you might want to do upper elementary, because I mean, you know, one of the problems, like I was working with Blaine County in Idaho. And I can say that because they decided not to do one this year, but they, like, we had to do, we, we had to use icons for the elementary kids, because it was really hard. You know, either, either that or staff was gonna have. emojis, exactly, so.
Mildly faced, or, yeah, I could think of some.
Yes, we, that is something to consider as well, no doubt about it. So, yep.
I, I, I mean, that's a huge stakeholder group we're missing on this particular satisfaction, right? Like, what do they want? What are they getting? I'd love to see us do that. I think Glen Hills, fourth and fifth, sixth through eighth would be, I'd love to, I'd love to just make a plug for that. I think that would be really powerful feedback for us to have.
I think it would be great to do as well. We would just want to wait till spring, because I know they've been surveyed quite a bit. They've had a couple of surveys this fall, so maybe spring for the student one, because they had the DAP and they had a, another one, so yeah. But definitely, I agree, because they're different kind of questions.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Anyone else have anything to add, say, contribute? Thank you, Perry. We'll go on to the next item.
Thanks, Perry.
Thank you, Perry.
Do you have anything? I know, it's departments, teaching and learning. Who is that on? Jenica, take it away.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Let me just go back. You got all that, everyone? All right. I'm gonna go through a presentation around some celebrations, areas of growth and next steps. And just a reminder, purpose, pride and passion is our hashtag for the school year. Um, the agenda for this presentation is we're going to be looking at our report card data. We're going to be looking at the spring assessment data from that report card data, and then fall screener data. Talking a little bit about the survey data, and then next steps. So just a little background on, on the state report cards. They started in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. And we've had two years of no report cards, so that was in the year of fourteen fifteen and eighteen nineteen. So there's been major changes to this formula as they've been doing the report cards from twenty twenty, twenty to twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two. There were no changes in the formula, and that's important to note. But there also has been a lot of suggestions from DPI to use caution from the post-COVID forward exam results. So that would be the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. So the last two forward state report cards, they're asking us to use caution when interpreting the scores. One of the reasons being is some of the tests have been changed, parts of the tests were not done, so they're not completely consistent. So just a little information around the report cards. There's four priority areas, one of them being achievement. On one, growth, target group outcomes, and on track to graduation. So as you can see on the screen, this is the district report card for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. For the district, we met expectations, Parkway exceeded expectations, and Glen Hills met expectations. The district achievement, so this was pulled right off of the report card. We were sixty-four point seven percent in the subject areas of English language arts, and then fifty-four point five percent for mathematics. When looking at achievement, it's the student's level of knowledge and skills attained compared against state academic standards in ELA and mathematics. You can see in the gray area, that's reported out for on the state results. So for K eight schools in the states, in the state. So I kind of did a little. Could, could I just make sure, could you go back to that prior slide? I, I'm trying to make sure I understand. So if I'm reading this right, we did better than the state average in ALA, but worse than the state average in math.
Correct.
Thank you. As, as for the district report card, yes. Um, so this kind of broke it down a little bit. So this is where I'm using that caution flag a little bit. When we look at the eighteen nineteen, that was pre-COVID or pre-pandemic. Then we did not test in nineteen twenty. We tested in twenty twenty-one. And we did a split testing that year, so we tested some students on a special day, because they were virtual, and that's when we came back. And then we did test again last year. So you can kind of see from twenty, this is hard to say, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. Um, we had, we had a nice increase, so you can kind of see we went up for ELA, six percent, math, nine point five percent, science, eight point five percent, and then social studies nineteen percent. But we also have to keep in mind, if we look at our posts or pre-pandemic scores, that we're not necessarily completely in line with those, but we also have to remember that that was a different formula that they were utilizing. So the assessment changed in twenty twenty.
So it's hard. Any apples to apples that would show us what the scores would have been if we were using the same test?
The closest we have is twenty twenty-one to twenty-one, twenty-two. The TDA was just not included for ELA on that. That's the closest.
Go ahead, Ben.
So, I mean, so yeah, I mean, you're looking at twenty, if you look at twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, and then twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. So yeah, all of them drop, but then social studies goes up. So is there, I mean, that's good. Is there a reason why social studies went up and then the others? Like, what, what happened?
We're not quite sure, but remember, it's only, it's one, it's fourth grade and eighth grade are the only grades that are being tested.
Oh, yeah, that's right, for science and social studies.
Sometimes it depends on the cohort of students, because it's just that grade. So that's where it gets a little sticky, you know, with that. And check them out when they were in fourth grade.
And what were you saying about, so the, what, what about the test changed from twenty eighteen, nineteen to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
The formulas of how they are doing everything have, have changed.
So the questions haven't changed, but how they evaluate the test has changed, have changed.
Well, some of the questions have changed, because there's, there were new standards for ELA. There are new standards for science.
Because I remember the A, the ACT did this, and I think it was like twenty fifteen, where like in math, they took away the bottom ten questions, added ten questions to the hardest. And so therefore you could answer fewer questions correct and still get, you know, a thirty two. So like someone in twenty, twenty eighteen could get, I don't know, man, I mean, this is just going to be a random guess, but like, let's say they got fifty right in, uh, twenty eighteen, right? And so then, because there's sixty questions, then they did thirty two on the ACT. Um, but then if they got fifty right in like twenty twelve, they would have gotten, uh, twenty nine or twenty eight or something like that. So is that kind of similar to this or?
It's, like, do you know? I don't know about the numbers of questions, but the standards changed, so therefore some of the questions changed.
The, this, okay, this, because the Common Core standards are still the same, like, so, uh, because the forward matches that, so which standards?
Well, the, the forward also looks at the Wisconsin State standards. Because it's, it's
I thought Wisconsin State, so there, it's going to be a little bit different because I thought the, I thought Wisconsin adopted the Common Core, did they not?
No, they're different. The ELA standards are different. Um, so quite a few of them. They combined a bunch of standards, the math.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I know. I remember doing that.
A bunch of them have changed. Some of the science standards have changed.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember matching things. Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of them have changed, so, so it's made a little bit of a difference, but I think we just need one more year of the assessment with this new formula to get some really good information.
But it, but it is kind of similar to that where, you know, you can answer fewer questions correct and, or is it all the way around where it's easier? So now you have to get more right to get a higher score?
Well, it's just, it's based on the questions. It's, it should be, I don't know the number of questions if that changed. I would have to dig into that. So that's something I can do. But the actual, some of the questions actually changed. They had like a science committee, they pulled a bunch of people based on the new standard, so they rewrote the questions.
Is it more similar? Because I remember there was a lot of reading on the forward test, you know, back in like twenty sixteen, seventeen. Uh, so is it less, uh, reading or is it about the same?
About the same.
Okay, so, okay, so.
From what I viewed, I couldn't take notes from what I
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, I know, I know, I know, I know. Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's, that's, well, and, but they also have the pre-test practice that they can do, but
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep going. Um, so this is achievement, also looking at different demographic groups. Um, so you can kind of see here where we have some point change from the prior year. So when looking at this, um, you can kind of see that we've, um, gone up. Our Asian, um, population has gone up thirteen point eight. I'm not going to read it to you, um, but you can kind of see where we stand with ELA. So we did, had a little, little dip, um, for our students who are black. Um, and then also a dip for two or more races and then economically disadvantaged students. But we also had some, some good growth areas. And then when we're looking at mathematics here, again, we've had, um, some really good growth in several areas. Um, looking here, so we only had one, um, demographic group, um, students who identify as two or more races um, had a little dip.
Jenica, are you gonna speak to this a little bit more at some point? Because I, I obviously would love to hear your thoughts about. It's not just the dip for students of color that I, that I find alarming. It's the the gap that existed before and the, the gap between achievement of, um, students as well as, so, so like there's, there's just a lot of layers here and I'm sure you guys are thinking about this, but I would love, this is where I really would like to hear what you guys are thinking about root causes and, and I'm assuming this will be part of your action plan, but I just, I don't want to skip over this and then, you know.
Right, and then the bottom line is our students who are white have a higher achievement and continue to have a higher achievement than all other demographic groups.
Right.
They're consistently achieving at higher rates.
So what is our theory? What is your, what is our theory about this? I mean, beyond the, the great big institutional racism and oppression, et cetera, finds its way into our education system, but within our district, like what is our theory of the case here as to why this is? I don't know. That's, that's really what I'm, I'm very drawn to this question and your thoughts and administrative specifically.
COVID, COVID was not helpful, um, for many students in our district. Um, we saw, uh, uh, I mean, we've only widening the gap, um, since COVID. Um, we also have to look at not just achievement, but we also are going to have to look at growth. So that's what I'll be showing you next. Um, we also, if we can get students, you know, who may not be, you know, at that achievement level, growing at faster rates, you know, than our whites. I mean, it's hard, hard to say. You, of course, you want all students to grow, right? And have high achievement, but we're going to have to accelerate that learning. And then also looking at it when we start looking at, um, because forward's only third grade through, um, well, it goes a little into high school, but it'll, it starts in third grade. So when we look at our by-grade level data, and I did share that with you, um, you can kind of see, um, that some of, some of, some of our gaps are getting bigger as kids are, um, moving into middle school.
I guess I, my, my big, my overarching question is how do you guys as administrators like really talk about this, really think about this? What are the tangible things that are happening in our schools that are contributing to this? And how are we addressing that? Like specifically these opportunity gaps, achievement, growth, et cetera, like is it curriculum? Is it better staff development? Is it the environment? Is it a, a lack of, I don't know, tangible actions around equity? So I guess, I, yeah, I, I understand that's a, um, probably a much larger conversation, but I feel like that should be part of the conversation when we're seeing numbers like this, right? And maybe it is, and I'm jumping the gun again. I'm sorry. So I just.
Well, we'll talk a lot about that toward the end.
Okay.
And it, and that would be for multiple, um, groups, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Danielle, I was just going to say, I think these are the conversations we have to be having. I don't think you're jumping the gun. I think we all want to figure out why these gaps are what they are. And we talk about equity and believing in equity, but are we, like, we've talked about it. When we're planning instruction, when we're looking at our data, when we're setting up our classroom routines, are we doing that all through a lens of equity so that we're meeting the needs of every single individual kid? Are we still doing it? And I know you said systemic racism, but like, are we still doing it in a way that fits the system that was built for a certain type of student? Like, do we really have to think about blowing that up a little bit and doing things in a completely different way? And I think we do have to start.
My language.
My conversation.
I'm in. I'm in. Let's burn.
I see Andy has his hand up. Thank you for.
Sorry, Andy.
Sorry, Andy. I didn't see that.
Hold on, please. Um, from now on, can we not cross-talk over each other and wait until please raise your hand to be called. Andy was patiently waiting for a very long time. And we cross-talked or spoke over him. So now I'm giving Andy the time to speak and from now on, please raise your hand. I will call on you and then we can, um, hear everyone speak.
I have it on record that Tamika said that I was patient. All right. Um, building on what, uh, Ms. Bailey just, uh, said. Last year I answered similar question and, um, I'm going to follow up on it today and it ties into what, uh, Ms. Bailey's talking about, which is, in essence, how do we cash the check? How do we set metrics and goals and what are our metrics and goals? Because the thing that is always frustrating is that we get to the point of reviewing it, we look at the whole in the report card. Um, the pandemic was definitely a problem, but the, there's still not, you know, excellent scores by, you know, in, in, in my opinion, there's growth, yes, but, you know, um, there are deficits that we have yet to make up. Um, and so my big concern here is, is that, you know, we're not going to get from, you know, zero to a hundred in one year, but we do have to set goals. We were talking about goals, for example, with the uh, with satisfaction, with parent satisfaction survey, uh, family satisfaction survey. We need to set goals and the board need to know what those goals are and we need to have those things accounted for during course of the year where we say this is the thing that we're looking at and this is what we're doing, you know, to make it up. As a parent, you know, I equity is one thing, but you know, we have to raise the floor and we need to raise the ceiling. And I feel like we're losing out on, on raising the ceiling or at least looking at it too. Um, we definitely need to do more to reach out to everyone in our district on their own, uh, level. Um, but I also feel like my lens is, is, you know, longer a parent of Glendale River Hill student. But my lens is that I think that there are a lot of cracks and those cracks, you know, may have had their origin in, directly in the pandemic, but I think there are a lot of things that are, are just not being addressed. Um, I look at how my, uh, kids are prepared for high school, how they, you know, are prepared for writing. Uh, I know there's a lot of coordination, you know, between the district, uh, as they feed into Nicolay. Um, but there are things that frankly, have been a concern of mine for some time that I've said things about. I feel oftentimes I look to the disconnect between teachers and curriculum. I feel like a lot of times there are resources that they should be exposing kids to that they don't. There are no books that, uh, or at least very few books that teachers rely on. And I think that books are really essential to have something hard and not a computer screen in front of you a, all the time. And I don't think that students are getting that all the time. I think that, um, we still have a lot of instruction that when it's not done on computer, it's done on paper. And, and so the texts aren't, uh, there. We need to update our text, uh, and have, uh, those reviews that we're starting to do uh, for curriculum. You know, I'm not here to poke my finger at someone and say, hey, you didn't do this or you didn't do that. There are a lot of reasons and, you know, on the one hand, no one to blame and on the other hand, everyone to blame. And we need to set goals. They have to be articulable and we have to work towards them. And frankly, we have to not make excuses towards doing that. I do appreciate the fact that you're being, you know, very kind of straightforward on, on what these results are, but, you know, I spend a lot of time on this board saying, we're doing what we can. I know who the teachers are. I know who the administration is. And I know that they're trying and all that's still true. But I think that sometimes you have to kick people in the rear a little bit too and say, look, try to do something different, accept those goals, be, you know, transparent about what we're doing. Um, I don't know and I don't see. I, we went through this massive curriculum uh, change when we went to block scheduling. I don't know what the impact was of the block scheduling or if that's contributed to scores or if we anticipate that growth is going to be or proficiency is going to be the same this year as, you know, it was last year. So these are things that I would like us to start addressing with more specificity going forward. I'd also like to know how we're doing compared to other schools in the neighborhood, not just the three feeder schools, but, you know, the other schools on the North Shore. So, I mean, those are the things that maybe you can still speak to, maybe you were planning on doing that, um, but I think that, you know, while we are a unique school and we do have unique problems and we do need to actually be serious about working at those, and I hear that from you. Um, I, I also think we need to see how other schools are doing and try to compare and see, you know, if there's something we could be doing better. So that's my sense with.
I'm gonna stop questions because she has gone through two slides, maybe three, and I want to get through the whole presentation. Um, and then, because some of this stuff that we're asking may be in the presentation or their answers might be in the presentation. So, uh, Ben, I do see you and I recognize, do you have a, a specific question about this particular thing? If not, wait until the end and then we can ask questions overall.
Yeah, you can move on.
Okay. Um, Jenica, can you please continue? And we're gonna try to, unless there's a specific question about that slide that you want, like clarification on, let's see if we can get through the whole presentation and then ask our specific questions about stuff, please.
Okay. All right. So the next section for the district report card was growth. So you can see the breakdown of English language arts and mathematics. So we were seventy one point seven um, as compared to the state, which was sixty six. And then mathematics, we were the same as the state for growth. Oops. I don't know why it's not, whoops. Um, this slide, um, is looking at ELA, a comparison from the previous, well, twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two. Um, the thing to note on this, so if it's a blue box, that means it's, it's three points, three to six points. Um, if it's an open box, it's below three points. What you really want is we want it to be moved to, um, a blue box, three points or higher. Um, so that those areas are, are doing well in growth. So when we look at, um, these different groups here. Jenica, oh, I have to put up my hand. Hold on.
Go ahead, Carla.
Uh, I, I have not been able to understand what this value-added number means. Can you explain what the, the metric is that I'm seeing when I look at these blue box numbers?
So they have a specific formula for this, so I haven't been able to figure out how they do the formula, but the purpose of this area, they have like a, a guide that you can kind of go through is, um, really looking at, um, it's a single measure that summarizes how rapidly, um, students are gaining knowledge and skills from year to year. Um, so they, um, have a formula that they use and, um, this is how they figure out the growth priority areas and it's supposed to complement the achievement area. So they get, kind of broke it out by, um, demographic groups, that whole growth, um, number.
So, that just, it's really hard for me to comprehend what that means. I saw that it's called the value-added score, right? I just, I'm not able to wrap my head around what it's supposed to. I, it sounds like it's some sort of regression analysis. They're building some curve?
Um, I, I can read it to you, but it's a, it's, it's a statistical technique known as added, which is
It's some statistical thing.
Like apples to apples. Um, so it, it's supposed to really do a comparison, um, compared to those, um, demographic groups, um, how, how their growth rates were. And so you're looking for the, that higher, um, value add, um, growth rate. So I do have a, um, handout that I could share with you and kind of walk you through it. Um, but I, I don't understand the formula, how they're doing it, but it's their value add way to do it.
Okay.
Even the CISA lady was not quite sure.
Yeah, okay. It looked like some statistical thing. I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
You got it. And then the mathematics one, so when you're looking at twenty twenty one, um, we, we needed to grow, right? And so we were able to make some good growth in several, um, demographic groups um, based on the value add formula they have.
Can you say what the three means again?
So three is kind of the tipping point. So if you're three to six, then you have a higher growth rate in that area.
Okay. Is that like a year's worth of growth? Like, is three representative of a year's worth of growth?
Yeah.
So it's saying, it's, it's saying that like all students in math made less than a year's worth of growth, like but then, um, but from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two.
Yes.
Not, oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
So like if students learn faster than you would have anticipated or more than you would have anticipated in a year, like more than a year's worth. Almost the accelerant part of the grow, okay.
Yes, we would like some of these groups to get to six, right?
I, like what you were talking about before, like how do we accelerate the growth of some groups, right? Okay, got it.
So we're seeing movement, but not enough.
Right, okay.
And you have the formula?
Um, I can, I can share it with you.
Sweet, thanks.
Yeah, if you can.
And please raise your hands when we need.
Yeah, sorry, that, that was my fault.
Okay. And then we have, um, the target group outcome. So all of the, everything on the report card, there's, there's, these are all like new formulas over the last couple of years and DPI is still kind of working with them. On this target group, group outcome, um, section, um, they're still doing a little work around it. But, um, what this is, is they consider it, um, there's four quartiles. This is, um, the outcomes for students with the lowest test scores in the school. So they're all, um, put into, um, this targeted group. And so you can kind of look at what their achievement is, what their growth level is. Um, looking at absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, and then their attendance. And then on track to graduate. So this is how successfully, um, students are achieving educational milestones that predict, predict later success. So if we look at the different milestones here, um, like district-wide attendance and you can do the comparison with the state. Um, so our, one of our areas, you know, of improvement would be that eighth grade mathematics. Um so are one of our areas, you know, of improvement would be that eighth grade mathematics. So then kind of when we looked at this, there were some areas for celebration. So we did, we did go up in in several grade levels. For ELA, and then we also went up significantly, and a lot of this was in your um board packet that was shared. Um significantly significantly in math. So we did have some really good growth in those areas and you were able to see that um also. Um on the growth and the value added area. Um things that we need to work on is really looking, you know, continuing to work on that middle school. Um ELA and math to ensure increased achievement data. Um we're not growing enough in math, science, and uh we're underperforming the state in those areas. And then also continue to focus on students we're underserving. So really looking at um students that. Um their achievement is not where we want it to be and and moving students. Forward and really looking kind of at the edges.
Okay, wait, before you go, um Carla.
Yep, so Jenica actually had a question about the prior slide. I don't think you just my hand up. Um the. If I have this right for these bar graphs. Your maximum number is a hundred for each of these, right? So if you had a score of a hundred, that means you're just nailing it on everything for being on track to graduation. Is that right?
Yes.
So if we had a score of a hundred on chronic absenteeism, that would mean it has disappeared in our district, for instance. Same for all of these, like eighth grade mathematics. I'm I'm not sure what these numbers are telling me. What would a hundred mean? Versus the forty six that we have.
Probably proficient. I would guess.
I'm looking at this stuff right now.
Cause it wouldn't be below.
No, it wouldn't be below.
So it'd be proficient and up.
Proficient and up. I'm looking at the document right now.
Is is are these numbers giving me a percentage of our student body then? Is that what this means?
I would say so.
So forty six point six means forty six point six percent of our eighth graders are proficient and up?
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine that the standard would be below proficient um. But I guess Jenica is looking at, but yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm assuming.
And I know Jenica's looking at it, but it could also be things like algebra ready, because we know if kids are algebra ready. Then they have a higher chance of graduation. Like there could be other factors too. I'm not sure.
So that that could be a different percentage than uh. Yeah. Proficient, yeah. But then the chronic. Uh.
Right.
Absenteeism, that that has, that has to just be a. Whether you're there or not, I don't know. What what would be the standard? Ten days, twenty days?
Yeah, they get ten.
Ten, okay.
So they're looking, they're looking at all the different areas and then it's like a weighted average used for the on track graduation score. Um so they are based off of a. A hundred percent because they're based off of the achievement data. So math and language arts are based off of the achievement data.
So basically forty six and a bit of percent of our students are on track for graduation for math. Is what that number is telling me? Okay.
You know what? I'm looking at the twenty uh one to twenty two data. So it says fourteen percent. Is this proficient? It says fourteen percent of the students are proficient. So I think Allison, or yeah, I guess you got, it would be more than just. Proficient, so it might actually be below. Professional included in there.
Yeah, and it's it's based off of like. All the, all these things are based off of multiple years. Multiple tests. So when they figure some of the stuff out, it's not always necessarily just, it's like an average. Which is also interesting.
Okay, then I had a question for the next slide. Which is where you were. So if I remember from the prior slide, we saw growth from twenty. Twenty twenty one to twenty one, twenty two, but we're still behind twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, right?
Yeah. So I'm gonna kind of dig into like our most recent assessment because this was done last spring, right? So even those those eighth graders are are now ninth graders. So kind of looking at the most current data. Um from the district. So STAR is um an assessment that can predict. Um how students do on forward exam, and that's we've been utilizing it for that and for. Um multiple purposes to help with planning and and supporting students in the in those buildings. Um but this is kind of showing the percentage of our first through eighth graders. Remember, we don't um. Do forward with our first and second graders, just third through eighth. So this is looking at current grade levels of where students um. Are predicted to be advanced or proficient on forward based off of their September assessment. So you can kind of see that. We we have some decline in the middle school and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk more to this later and kind of. Share some thoughts on on why some of those declines are there.
One quick question. You said that they ta- te- test between third and eighth grade.
Correct.
Do we do map testing for the younger kids?
At all? We do K five through eighth grade, but the K five assessment is early lit, so it's not like a. A comparable um assessment to the first through the eighth grade one.
But you do use that data to help with. As they go into third, fourth bit.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um Ben.
Have you noticed a huge difference between the type of questions asked on the STAR assessment and forward? Is it, does that still exist?
I think there it's closer than it has been. Um but again, I I don't sit and watch every, you know. Question and do a comparison of it.
Yeah, I just remember the, well, anyway, okay.
But it's nationally normed, I I'm, many districts use it.
I I I remember, I remember looking at this chart too. I just remember that, I just remember, I just remember uh. Cause yeah, I mean, I I use STAR when in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And yeah, so I I remember looking at this, but I just remember the. Uh. The questions just. You know, look different. Where it was more computational for STAR assessments.
But Jenica.
Alright, um this is the um. Broken out by demographic groups here. So you can kind of see the percentages there also for ELA and math. I also put um gifted and talented in here as well. So you can kind of see who's who's predicted to be advanced and proficient based off of the fall, September, um STAR assessment. And this is for um all grade levels, first through eighth grade.
Um Carla.
So so what's the reason for the projection? Is that to give you some sort of metric to shoot for for the spring assessments? Why do they do projection?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it it also helps us to determine um. If there needs to be additional services for students within the classrooms. We have, I mean, we have a whole CST process. Um we really work on our multi-level systems of support. So we were pulling up this data. Um teacher teams are looking at the data. They're looking at the data for their grade level. Um they're breaking this out by demographic groups. I'm gonna, I was gonna go into that at the end, but it, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we we really use this and but this is one piece of data that we use. There's multiple sources of data that we use. Um as well. Um this one I pulled up just because um some of those. Um predicting scores from STAR um really looked low and I was like nine percent for ELA. And I'm like the forward wasn't giving us that same information. So if you look at this chart. Um you can see ELA twenty two star. So that was given this fall. And then the the previous year on forward, forty four percent of the students were. Um advanced or proficient. So I'm, there's some discrepancies here, right? So we were having some conversations around um. Why we had such a such a dip. And that could be, you know, testing environment. It could be, you know, students in eighth grade, you know. Did they take the STAR assessment like they take the forward assessment? So really kind of digging into that. So we had some conversations with teacher teams around that. Um so we we do STAR again uh in January. So then we'll use the data again and I'll bring that back to the board. And we're gonna be looking for growth, right? So from this original data that I'm presenting today, we're gonna be looking for growth um after the January assessment. So you'll kind of be seeing some similar things. Um you can also see the math as well. We we had some some dips on the STAR versus our forward. So and again, looking at um the STAR data. Um looking at at almost fifty, looking at a lot of our students in first through fourth grade, we're at that fifty, almost fifty percent proficiency. Um which is good. We had strong ELA proficiency numbers in almost every gil- grade. Seventh grade outperformed what we thought they were going to do um based off of their forward um information. And then with areas of growth, um really looking into um some of that math. Um information for a middle school, looking at figuring out why they didn't score as well. And really looking at that January assessment to make sure that they're making growth. Um. And then also that math proficiency, just keep working on, you know, building that. And then just really trying to get consistent with our demographic data. Um it just kind of seemed like it was. It was, it was not consistent with forward. So trying to figure out um why that's not. Consistent, why we're, why we're doing one way on forward and then we're doing a little different on STAR. So that's, that's our our. Our questions that we had.
Um can I ask you one, is there, are you trying to figure it out or is there someone? At the, I'm sorry, I didn't know my camera keeps going in and out. Or is there someone? At the state level that can answer those questions or try to help you with that? Because they are doing the formulas, they know the formulas, they made the formulas. So if you, is there a way to go and ask them instead of you trying to figure out, like read their minds on how they're doing it? Is there somebody you can go and say? This is the question I have. I need to kind of answer this because this is nine and this is whatever that other number was. And there's such a discrepancy. Can you explain why this is?
Um I could ask somebody, but. I I'm wondering if once we take our January assessment, if we're gonna see some different data. Um based on how the students do. Um but I'd be more than happy to reach out to the state.
My my only thought is that. I would rather just, it might be a five minute question to ask the state. Instead of you spending an hour just trying to figure out how the heck their brain works. And if it doesn't, no loss, you've missed five minutes. But if it is an answer, you might have saved an hour. That's all. I'm just saying that.
Well, that makes sense. I can reach out to, actually, I'll reach out to STAR as well.
Okay.
But I'm getting inconsistent data.
Right, and and at least let them try to explain it, cause if they can't, then. These these, these results are kind of useless if you, they can't even explain their own thought process on. How they're getting data and how are they comparing? And that would be my big question.
Yep. Nope, that makes sense.
Okay, continue, I'm sorry.
Um the other thing I wanted to include too, um is that we're just not just looking at academics. Um we're looking at the whole child. Um so then we have been doing some work around um. The DAP survey, which you're gonna, um Kelly's gonna present this in January, so she's gonna spend some time on this. But I just wanted the board to know that we are focusing on other data points as well for students and not just. Academic, so we have to kind of put all the pieces together um for the students in the district. And then I wanted to remind everyone up. No, I was just gonna say that with the DAP survey, what's really nice this year too is that we did it last year. So you guys will be able to see some comparison data. That's all I was gonna say.
Mm hmm.
Thanks, Jennifer. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um so I just wanted to um kind of go back to um some of the previous questions. So we, so we. Um did some sale work and kind of did a data dig at the end of the school year last year. And came up with some um district goals for the district based off of last year's data. Um so you can kind of see, um you've heard these goals probably a bunch of times. But um our goals are to increase, increase literacy and math proficiency for all students and reduce achievement gaps. For all subgroups by five percent is measured by STAR. So that's the um what we just shared was that STAR information. And then also um. Sure. Implement district wide systems and processes that support a safe and productive learning environment.
Um and we are going to call and Danielle.
Thank you. Um just to that point, so yes, we've heard this goal a lot. And my my question is, what's the timeframe for this five percent goal? What timeframe have you guys given yourself for to look at data? You know, from beginning to end.
Um we'll progress monitor data all throughout the school year, but the end of the school year is the goal.
And okay, end of this school year.
Correct. So we have, we do a spring STAR as well. So we want to see a year's growth.
And so for, okay, as measured by STAR. Okay, got it, got it, got it. Uh. I just like overarching, high level question, which doesn't need to be necessarily explored right now, but I'd like to. Talk about maybe with with you, Jenica, further or Allison, just. The STAR and the forward test, obviously, we've talked about, I mean, people have feelings about them uh about bias within these tests and. I get a letter every year, I think, from you, Jenica, that says, here's the results. Just so you know, this is not the only indicator we look at, right, for how your child is doing, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd love to understand how we as a district are weighting these, like. Against our mission values, beliefs, against our goals. Um. Just like, I know we're using them as markers, they're part of the report card. So I would like to have a better understanding of that. A more holistic understanding of like, just our own personal beliefs around these tests as a district. And also whether this might be an area where. Uh we could be doing some more advocacy, you know, some legislative advocacy possibly as a a school board or a district just around. State tests, bias, I don't know. Uh you know, so I'd I'd love to kind of dig into this more with administrators and. That's, that's all.
Go ahead, Ben.
So the STAR test, you know, it's it's basically just a data point and um I guess one thing I used to do. Uh was I looked at, cause I know it gives you the. Average growth or whatnot. You know, how many grades the kids went up and I, you know, that's kind of a. Interesting stat because, you know, okay, so well, in the fall, it it's three tests essentially, right? Beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So you could have a kid one time just not try in the fall and then tries really hard. You know, in the spring and then they, you know, they raise three grade levels and it's just like, whoa, how did that, you know, and it didn't actually happen like that. But you know, it might be interesting to also. Look at the um. Maybe the average. Growth rate uh for a district goal, but uh that's, that's all I have.
Hey, Andy.
I would just like to say that we're here to discuss the report card. The report card is a flawed tool. Alright, it definitely does, you have a a calculation that includes data that might be old. Um there are problems with it. But. Wild though it is. I think that we need to have specific goals moving forward that are adopted. So that we can go forward and that are tied to the report card itself. I understand that the goalpost move, but the goalpost move with a lot of different things, including STAR testing. And I still don't know what the goals were that we were reaching for for this year. Um or how we uh may have, you know, uh achieved them or not achieved them. But as I read this, I I I don't believe that district goals should be limited. Um and I'm not sure this is entirely what Ben was saying, but I don't think that our goals for a district in terms of. Growth and proficiency should be limited to, you know, how they score in the STAR test. And then on the other side, I I mean, I don't agree with implement district wide systems and processes that support and save and productive culture for learning, but. Gosh darn it, what have we been doing our entire time on the school board? Isn't that what we always do? What, what are you asking us to do? What are you asking us to change so that we can facilitate this goal? We need something objective and. We need something objective and, and while. While it's a little bit unfair to ask for an objective goal and then to, you know, hold someone accountable to that goal. And while I do believe that there's more than just objective considerations. I do believe that it has to be a factor and continually. And, and believe me, Ms. Westfall, it's not you and it's not, uh, the school district, not any one person, but. In my time on the board, I've never seen these questions answered. I've seen the report card come, we hem and haw. We promise to change something and then we come back to another year and go through the rigmarole again. So what I really would advocate is having a process, having a goal. And then having a review of that and bringing that to the curriculum committee and saying, this is what we're doing. This is how we're achieving it. And let us show that we're at least trying to focus on some things. Thank you.
Um, I do have one quick question and then Ben, I'll get to you. Is part of. Is part of the information that we started with the one eighty day goal and the. The other goals, goals that we have set. Um, I guess maybe one of the things we can do, cause I know you have set some of these goals and they have been brought to the board. But I think we need to possibly hear some benchmarks. So where we are, like when you set the goal and then like now, where are you at? To achieving that particular goal? Because I think that's a biggest part that we're missing is, and Andy is correct, we always talk about these goals. And then we talk about the end result, but. What are we doing in between to maybe show that we're achieving them? Or we're not achieving them and we then we have to redirect. So I think there should be some kind of mid. Mid thing or something like that where we, we can do that. So, um, I'm gonna go to Ben and then Allison, Ben. And that was just a, a comment that could help, um, with. What Andy said and, and some of the stuff with Danielle said, cause we, you know, you said you had goals and I think we have a list of them, but. How are they being achieved? And where are you in the middle of achieving that? I guess that could be a question. Go ahead. Ben, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah. So just to go off of Andy and Tamika and then clarify my point is I was just saying it might be interesting to look at. Like the average growth rate of different subgroups. So you might like take the bottom twenty percent of your class. And you say, well, I want to get these kids to raise up two grade levels or something like that. Again. If you have a population of twenty kids, it's, I, it might be a little bit skewed, but. Let's say maybe it's a little bit bigger. Um, I, I don't know. I, I was, I'm just saying that instead of just looking at a flat percentage of increase, it might be interesting to. You know, separated by subgroup and instead of doing like, uh, again, a percent, you would look at the average, uh, increase in grade level.
Ben, can I ask a question and what you just said? So are you saying like? Not necessarily split, like say if you split them up in threes. Like the top, middle and bottom, you want the bottom to come up like maybe three grade levels. The middle ones to, to achieve one or two and still see some growth with the top. Percentages of kids who are achieving. So it's a, it's not just, cause if you average out. Let me ask this. So what happens if the top achieving kids do extremely well? In, in the sense that means the average is gonna go up, but it may not have affected the, the bottom half of it. Because they did so extremely well, or vice versa, where the bottom really came up and really did some real big growth. But the middle and the top section of it did not do as well. And, but if you average it, if you. Average it out altogether, it looks like there's growth when there is still something lacking in something.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to say, um. Because.
Well, I just, that was just clarifying. They'll figure it out, I guess.
Well, but with, with like ACT, for example, if you have someone getting a thirty five on the ACT. You know, they're, they're, they're not. I mean, it depends again, like if, or while they, are they going into calc three? Are they doing college classes? Are they, you know? But let's say they stay within the realm of high school, you know? They're not gonna make as big of a gain as someone who's getting a seventeen on the ACT and all of a sudden they get a twenty two. So like, you know, and all I'm saying is like, if we split it up and we look at like the bottom twenty percent, we could say, well. You know, we're going to raise these kids up, you know, like you said, three grade levels. Um, but we're gonna like. Focus on, you know, getting them to do fifteen extra minutes of Alex every day during resource. And the top kids to Andy's point is, you know, you're still raising the ceiling. But you just know that, you know, okay, so yeah, we still want to raise them. I mean, at a minimum, a grade level, but you know, like, yeah, one point five to, because it's just the, the. It's kind of like, you know, any, anything you get really, really good at, it gets harder and harder to ma- to make big gains, you know?
Okay, um, Allison and then Carla.
I was just gonna say to Andy's point. That he's absolutely right. We should have goals and we should be reporting our progress on those goals, but that's. That's what I walked into. And so that's what the team is putting in place. We wanted to have a strategic plan last year. We just didn't get there last year. There was a lot going on still, and we were all trying to figure out. How everything worked and how to set things in space, place. So we created these two goals. And I think I shared them in a board update, Andy, but if I, I, I'm not absolutely sure. So if I didn't, I apologize. But we drafted building and district improvement plans. And I can share them again. I'll definitely share them again in case I did it. But on the district improvement plan, it's, it has exactly what you're saying. It's got. Here's our star data right now. If we want to grow five percent, here's our goal. And then when we take the test in winter, we'll go back to that and see how we're doing. And then same thing in spring, we'll decide if we want to stretch our goals, if we want to keep them what they are. And we'll monitor that progress. And once we have a strategic plan in place. The board will help us determine, these are the things we want you to monitor. So these are your goals. And then you'll get regular report outs on those. But eventually we want to get to a space where we're not just talking about a school report card. Where we're using star data and we're using classroom assessments, informative assessments. And all kinds of other pieces of data to turn, to determine how our kids are doing. So that's the plan. That's where we want to get to. That's where we want to be. We're just working towards that.
And I recognize that and I, Carla had her hand up. I recognize that and I'm not like I say, pointing blame at anyone, but I am saying. You know, we have to have that mentality of, well, let's respond and do whatever. I mean, district responses, sixteen districts, I look at that and I'm like. It's almost not meaningless or it's almost not meaningful. It's, because there's so many different things that we try to do. I mean, you, you, we need to be strategic about it and we need to be sharp about it. So that's all I'm saying. That's gotta be moving forward.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Just because you said you know Carla's there, still please try to, to wait the turn. Carla, thank you for waiting. Go ahead.
Oh, it's fine. I know he was responding to.
It's still, we're trying to keep protocol here.
Um, but I, I just wanted to add, um. I, I was just thinking about it, so I'll just share it. You know, I, building on what Ben was saying, you know, one of the problems with relying on. Things like star tests, um, in evaluating growth is that the kids at the top, there's no place to grow, right? Um, if you've got a kid who's already scoring ninety eighth percentile, there's, there's no place to go. Right? So I don't know how you assess growth for the kids at the top. But what it means is. You know, you're gonna necessarily look to the bottom. Right? For the biggest growth. Um, what I always worry about is that those kids at the top who are. Already at the top of that, those standardized testing metrics. I don't know how you evaluate growth for them. Right? I don't know how you evaluate progress and that's what I always worry about. And I don't know. How we capture that when we're looking at these sort of quantitative metrics, um, in terms of. Um, success, you know, that vector to, to success, achieving everything they can. And I just, I, to Ben's point, you just can't see that growth at the top. So if we're doing everything right, we're gonna naturally see that gap decrease, right? If the white kids are at the top on average and kids of color are down here, you know, you're gonna bump on the ceiling, which is as far as you can go on testing. If our school is doing its right, we should all be headed towards the top. So, you know, that's what. And coming back to what Danielle said earlier, you know, that's what I worry about as we look at these test results. How do we start? Bumping from the bottom and pushing everything up, right? To me, it's all connected back to, I mean, it's, it's tied into some of the survey responses we got, right? We have parents who are saying our kids aren't being challenged. I don't, one out of four parents are saying, I don't get the help I need. My kids aren't getting the help they need, right? I don't know what the academic expectations are. It's all. This is kind of hot mess, all balled up together, right? So I don't know how you're gonna untangle it.
Allison.
I was just gonna say, I, this, that's something I'd like to dig into with Jenica a little bit because it's been a little bit since I was the. Classroom teacher looking at this data, but. There was a space in time where you had kids who ranked at a certain percentile, but there was still a growth score. That let you know if they were still growing, because we would often look at that and we would say, okay, if this kid's not, then we have to look at enrichment. Or we need to look at like a GT plan. And if they were growing, then we were like, okay, what we're doing in the classroom is meeting. The needs of even the advanced learners. So I'd like to dig into that with Jenica a little bit because I know. There was a way to measure even for those kids at the very top, that they were still growing because the test does adjust. You know what I mean? Like it can go up different grade levels and things like that. So I would like to look into that because I hear what you're saying.
Okay, finish off, Jenica.
Okay, so district responses. So, um, the administrative team has done sale training and continues to do sale training. So really what that is, is coming up with a plan of action to support those goals. So that's what we've been focusing on. And really being focused. Um, some of the things that we're doing are making sure that we are doing that data monitoring. We started in the end of last year, having a data retreat. And now our focus this year is doing data monitoring. So what that means is we'll be doing that star testing three times this year. So you will see me again after the next star testing. So we can check on the growth. Um, for our students and see where our achievement data is, um, after that January assessment. That'll also be looked at by classroom teachers and building principles. Um, to drive some of the work. Um, we're providing a lot of feedback and coaching. Um, so that's something that we've been doing is doing some, um. We looked at some high leverage, um, strategies, utilizing some of Hattie's work. We picked, um, three strategies to work on, um, this school year with all of, um, the classroom teachers. Um, kindergarten all the way to eighth grade. Um, and that's kind of our focus for the district. Um, having a very intentional focus on areas of improvement. Um, then we also aligned our professional development to our district goals and those. Um, instructional high leverage practices. Um, I know that on the board and Allison and, and behind the scenes, there's some strategic planning work that's on the docket. Um, we've been doing some policy work, um, with adjusting some of the policies. Um, the board made that change to block scheduling that has been very supportive of some of the work that we're doing in the middle school. Also providing those full PD days has been extremely helpful. There's been a focus on culture and student engagement, um, the school year really honing in on that, um, second goal. Um, and collecting feedback around that, right? So doing that DAP survey, um, the other SEL survey and then also, um. Doing the staff survey is gonna help support some of this. Um, research-based interventions and training. So with the new, um, interventionists that have been hired. There has been training for those interventionists to help support students, um, in order to affect change and growth. Um, we've also, um, purchased some additional research-based, um, interventions as well. Um, Parkway has been going through some training around early literacy that was needed after the curriculum review last year. So they're running an institute on, around early literacy, um, to provide professional development and support for staff there. Um, we're also in the middle of a review and revise collaboration with our partner districts around math curriculum that you're. I've mentioned before, um, and then the, the data collection dashboard and progress monitoring. This is, um, one of the questions that, um. You had, um, Ben as well, is utilizing a dashboard that collects data, um, year to year. Multiple years for a student. Um, so it's all in one spot, like all the data is connected. It even from Google sheets, from common assessments can go right into the dashboard. Um, your summative assessments can go in there, report are your attendance, um, any. Behavior, state testing, star testing, all of that. So you get a whole picture of the child. And then we can also utilize that to look at district reports, building reports, all of that. So then. When we start doing some board presentations next year and have that dashboard, we'll be able to pull up stuff really fast instead of trying to, you know. Dig through multiple data sources. Um, we've also been utilizing progress monitoring tools, FastBridge. Um, and training all of our, um, interventionists on FastBridge. And that's been a new rollout over the last couple of months. And then trying to, um, increase our communication around our focus goals and everything kind of really goes back to those goals. Um, with our district newsletters and then, um. District office is also meeting with staff, um, every trimester to kind of go through the goals and, um. Check in on everyone and then also, um, doing rounding. So meeting with, um, teachers and coaches. Around, um, just asking our rounding questions to try to look at themes of for improvement. So that's kind of the district response to some of this. And then the building level response is a little different, but still focused on those goals. So they're having those instructional meetings. Um, so they're really focusing in on instruction. What are those expectations? Um, our big focus is gonna be, um, in our next one hundred day pit plan, learning targets. So focusing in on, um, teachers sharing their learning targets, um, asking students, um. What are they learning today? How do you, how do you know you've learned it? And so different questions like that. And we're gonna be progress monitoring that. Um, there's coaches and interventionist meetings that are happening weekly in both buildings, um, with administration. And then they're also meeting with, um, grade level teams. Um, we've been doing a lot of planning for a multi-level systems of support and kind of looking at that. I've been working with Kelly. And then we've also been working with an administrative team to kind of put in our layers of, um, support, um, for students. And then doing some training, win time is something new over at Parkway. There's a designated time to provide, um, additional support for students. So there, we, we've been doing some training around that. Um, the building administrators, the coaching staff. And grade level teams have been doing planning and, um, putting together supports for students at Parkway. Um, second step has been, um. Kind of a new rollout over at Glen Hills, really focusing in on the social, emotional, um, learning of students. So the guidance counselors have been, um, supporting or, and the SST team have been supporting that work. Um, the similar, um, SEL lessons are happening at Parkway. Um, restorative practice training has been happening over at Glen Hills. Um, with doing, um, some circles and really building up that, um, classroom culture. Um, something this year, I, I've attended a few of these, of the CST meetings and data digs that are happening at Parkway and Glen Hills. This, um, Ben is where, um, you were mentioning, kind of looking at that group of students. Um, so every classroom teacher, when they wrote their SLO, um, are focusing in on a group of students within their classrooms. So students that did not have high achievement and, you know, um, there was a gap. So every classroom teacher has a group of students that they're focusing on. And then we're progress monitoring those students, um, throughout the school year. Um, making sure that they're making growth. So they all said, all classroom teachers set a goal for a group of students to move them. Um, at least that five percent. Again, the work the student support team members are doing, um, big shout out to them. Um, teachers are, um, doing newsletters, um, weekly at both buildings. Um, to, you know, upper communication, um, administrators are doing bi-weekly newsletters. They're having rounding meetings and then doing some progress monitoring. Um, something else that, um, I forgot to mention is that they're also, um, doing some work around plannings. Collaborative planning is one of, um, our focus areas, uh, high leverage instructional practice. Where they're working with a special education teacher, the EL teacher, um, Lolita, um, coaches. And we're really, um, working on planning to the edges to make sure that when we're planning our lessons. That we're meeting the needs of all students in the class, whether we need to, you know, extend an activity. Or we might need to provide a graphic organizer for some students, um, depending on what their needs are. We're trying to intentionally plan before we do the lesson so that we have those resources available for students. so that we have those resources available for students. So a lot of work is happening behind the scenes. Um, so I'll be very excited to see what our next star scores look like. And again, that's one data point. Um, we'll have, we have other data points as well, um, report cards, you know, common formative assessments, the assessment they're doing in the classrooms. Um, so we're looking forward to that.
All right. Thank you, Jenica. Do we have any questions among the board? Ben.
Uh, just real quick. So when you said progress monitoring, is that with the Ames Web thing or is that with uh, Star? Or is that Ames? I can't remember.
Um, well, we're using progress monitoring. Well, twofold, we're gonna progress monitor with Star, right? Because we want to see if students are making that growth and what their achievement is, right?
As the final, right?
Right. But for students who are in an intervention, so our tier two or tier three students, we're utilizing FastBridge, which is very similar to an Ames Web.
Got it. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Both for math, SEL, and for um, ELA.
Okay, any other board questions? Alrighty, we will go to um, 4B, Special Education and Student Services.
Thanks, Jenica.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jenica.
Um, the next piece is mine, um, and you have your executive summary there. I just wanted to share with the school board some of the work we're doing in terms of special education. Um, knowing that our special educators are serving the most vulnerable population of students in our school district. One of the things that I felt was really important was for us to look at um, trends in our um, in the students we're identifying with special education needs. And to really look at uh, the caseloads of our special education teachers. So this school year, we implemented or are trying out a weighted caseload system to help us look at student needs. It feels a little bit icky because you're essentially taking a little human being with needs and you're trying to quantify numerically quantify those needs with a number and give them a weighting. Um, but there, in my opinion, there needs to be a system that will help me moving forward, determine staffing, determine our the caseloads of our special education teachers. And then also give us some data points as we're making open enrollment, special education seats, seat decisions about students with spe- with disabilities. Okay? So the system we pulled is from the Department of Public Instruction. It's from Wisconsin. It's an old system. They have not updated the system. It's it's not perfect, but it's something to give us a starting point. And essentially, what the weighted caseload system does is, is every student starts with a factor of one. A student who requires special education, they are given weights and added factors. And some of the things we would take into consideration for adding factors would be things like the amount of specially designed instruction that's needed. Um, any health needs, sensory needs, behavioral needs. And we also provide an extra weight for students that are receiving inclusive services, just knowing that there's an extra level of planning required. Um, and that to do that well requires increased collaboration and increased time. So um, that also is factored into the weighting. Um, so the sum of those factors from DPI's recommendation was that if, if a weight go on a particular caseload goes above twenty-six, then that's something that you should be looking at. Um, about whether or not that caseload is doable. Um, or if you need to shift things around, or even if you need to consider hiring additional staff. So I just gave you some very precursory numbers there. Um, knowing that our special education uh, population grows throughout the school year, I'm especially looking at those early learning levels, early childhood by nature grows because as children turn three, referrals are made and those students then become part of our public school system and they're receiving their services through early childhood special education. And then I also wanted to draw your attention to something that I think we're going to want to consider next month in January, when we determine those open enrollment seats. Um, is those, those two numbers there, the first one, um, new move-ins. So this school year, we have, um, I don't, I didn't write down the number of students, but the total weight of students that were new to Glendale River Hills that required specially designed instruction was forty-two point three one. So that was in that, right? That's well above that twenty-six measure. And was an unexpected number of students. Um, so that did have an impact on service delivery. And then so far this school year for new evaluations that have happened, the total weight was twenty-nine point one seven. So right there is like a whole caseload of students. And so my plan is when I'm thinking about or making projections for next school year, because right, we have to sit down in January and talk about that. Is I'm going to be taking like a three-year rolling average of new move-ins and what their weights are or were as they moved in and also newly qualified students and what their total weights are, because I think it's going to be really important for us to do the best that we can do to predict what that overall weight will be for our school district. So we can so we can do a really good job making sure we're aligning our service providers with the needs of our school district. And again, looking at next school year for early childhood, right now, my projection like based on the students that I know will be back in early childhood is very low, but three-year-old evaluations are happening like almost like by the minute and the numbers for that projection will, will essentially grow. I almost have to take that out of our total weight because um, I am positive that that early childhood number will, will get up there.
Thank you, Kelly. Any, we have Carla, go ahead.
Thank you. Where did Kelly go on my screen?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. You're, you're third in the grid from the left at the top of my screen. I just want to see your face. So I really appreciate this. I want to tell you that I, although I agree with you, it's gotta feel yucky in your shoes, putting a number on a student. I just love that you're looking at some metrics to see what kind of staffing needs um, our teachers might have. I view it less as being about the students and more as like trying to figure out the case, the workload for a teacher. So I really love that and I'm, I'm thankful you're doing that. Um, a couple of questions for you about this. Um, I, I, just because I'm interested in this data, you know, I do you have like a, a scatter chart almost of, you know, I, I mean, I know you have these total numbers. I'm curious where where your kids fall? Like where, whether we have a lot of lone, low number kids versus high number kids, like what that map looks like for our schoolhouses?
I have a, I have a giant spreadsheet and I would say that the majority of our kids would fall like in that moderate measure li- range, not extremely high in terms of need and not extremely low in terms of need, but more in that moderate range.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I love scatter charts. It's a great way to see kind of the density of what you have. Um, for um, are five oh four kids included in any of this?
Five oh four kids are not, um, because they are not students with special education needs.
Uh, so just students who have qualified for IEPs?
Just for students that have, that require specially designed instruction or students with disabilities that require an IEP.
Okay. And then the last question I has, I, I noticed, um, you mentioned, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up this document. I think your document says we have fourteen special education teachers, right? That, does that include paras?
No, that does not include paras. And I'm having, I was just meeting with some other, other directors of, I'm having a hard time determining how we would factor a para in. Um, essentially, it's not like one of the factors that was recommended in the waiting from DPI, but that certainly is something to take into consideration when we're thinking about the needs of a student or even let's say, open enrollment, um, decision-making and a student maybe um, that requires one-on-one para support. And that's not just something that we have available. So para, a really good para is really hard to find right now, right? Um, so I don't necessarily have an answer for that, but I will tell you that DPI is working. Of course, they're working on revamp, revamping the system because it's the system I try, I'm trying the old system this year. Um, because people are saying we need something to help us make these decisions and we need something to, to help us feel good about the decisions we're making. Um, so um, DPI is aware that it's a need and the majority of districts around us are doing something similar using the, the old DPI waiting. Just so that I have something systematic to use.
Do you have a sense yet of how teachers feel? Your special ed teachers feel about?
They feel validated. Um, to show them, to show them the weights um, by grade level. Some of them were like, I knew it. I knew I was working really hard. So it's very validating to see that. Um, yeah. Mr. Franklin, I see your hand is up.
Thanks so much. You know, I was gonna say exactly what Carla did, but I think it's important to echo it. I don't get the sense here that you're quantifying students so much as you're trying to classify students in a way that promotes their uh, well, our school's ability to reach out to them and to be equitable to them, providing them the need that they have. And also i- in, in a way that, you know, is uh, considerate of our resources. So I'm hopeful that this is gonna work out. I hope that you've had some good feedback from it, you know, so far. Um, and uh, you know, just let us know how it goes. And if this needs to become sometime an official policy, I don't know. But uh, I appreciate the creative thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Um, you got, we're cut out for you, but I thank you for taking on the task. Okay, we are going, moving on to, what are we on to?
Business.
Uh, me too. Sorry, see, um, business and operations. I think this is going to be Lindsay. Lindsay's been waiting. Where's your hat? Where is your festive?
I'm having technology issues, man, so.
There you go.
It came off in a fit of frustration. So there we go.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Make it a little bit lighter.
That's great.
So I wanted to provide an update uh, with uh, what we brought to Buildings and Grounds uh, earlier this month. Um, actually, last month, we bought our building study that was done in twenty twenty-one by Performance Services. And looking at that, we were uh, trying to determine what was the additional information that we needed. And so the study that was done gave us a lot of information about the condition of the building. Um, but it did not give us um, as much detail as far as cost and um, just different things with the community. And so uh, we wanted to um, reach out to um, an architecture firm that would be able to help us work with getting information that we'd be able to help um, add more information to the facility study. So with that, it is includes um, a capacity study, which is now and in five to ten years, the birth rate and the information of um, the community itself and the growth planning. And then also um, the edu- the educational adequacy. So what that means is that this study would be able to help us determine what are the divisions and missions of our district of what we want to provide for teaching and learning? And do our facilities align with like the goals of what we want to do? And also with that, um, the capacity study, there are two studies we want to do. One is by the Applied Population La- Lab, which is based out of UW Madison. Um, this one talks about the birth rate information and just the overall data. And then there's this, uh, another study that we wanted to do by a consultant uh, by the name of Mark Roffers. Uh, this one, it goes into a much more in-depth study uh, which looks, looks at the business development in the community, the feedback of realtors that uh, will reach out to the residents and get some insight. And then also working with the village and the city and then uh, surveying our new families. Uh, that's something that would take uh, probably about three months, but he is uh, not able to start it until next spring, just because it is just very much in high demand. But the uh, population study with uh, Madison will be done in February. Um, so we put out an RFP for an architecture firm. Uh, and we are due to get those back tomorrow. Um, we had four firms that came in for, I'm sorry, three firms that came in for building tours. Um, and we just walked them around, uh, all three of our buildings. They were able to ask questions and just get a layout of our district. Uh, and then we are bringing that to the board in January with um, just the potential firms and just feedback that we had from the proposal that we um, received. Um, the other thing that I also included was the uh, historical enrollment analysis. It um, it coincides with what Kelly talked about, um, just because of open enrollment. And if you look at it, it shows the historical going back to two thousand eleven and twelve of how many students we have, how many were open enrollment in, how many were open enrollment out? And then how many were special ed in and special ed out? And then also with that is um, including what our class sizes would be if we did not have open enrollment. So um, it's just a little bit more in-depth uh, to look at historical numbers as we approach Jan- January with our open enrollment. It should have been in the board docs.
Is that in the administrative content? I'm sorry, I missed.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I see it now. Thank you.
That's all I had.
All right, um, just to clarify a little bit more, um, this historically, this was supposedly s- to be started before pandemic. Um, and we were looking, just like we had uh, issues with, you know, classroom sizes, different things at the beginning of the year. We were trying to get a candle on this and what our needs were. In these studies, what they will also look at is um, what the community wants as of, you know, their building. Um, how do we pay for it? What do we pay for? So it's a a broader spectrum than just, you know, just us, because this involves the teachers, involves the administration, involves building, you know, principals, but it also involves the taxpayers and the actual city and villages, or City of Glendale and the Village of River Hills that we represent. So it's, it is something and it needs, it is actually for me, it's one of a top priority because if we don't start moving this forward, we're gonna get caught um, ve- relatively quickly, depending on if our growth is bigger or not, or if people start coming in or out or whatever it is. We're gonna have an issue. So um, pushing this, this um, these studies is a great way to get information.
Um, so to tie into what Tamika said, um, because when you're looking at the population, uh, the facility study and the building study helps us look at the space of our building. So that in five years, are we projected to have uh, an increase in enrollment in our early childhood? Do we have the space and the capacity in our building? So that's why just getting a very in-depth uh, study about the buildings itself is, is very helpful too.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Uh, Danielle, I thought I saw your hair.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Actually, like my skin color too. Sorry, I'm getting tired. Okay, um, no, I just wanted to say thank you to Lindsay for just for thinking about things in this way because I just were like, I got real excited when I saw three B educational adequacy because when we did have the previous study done, it really does talk about the logistics of our buildings. But I think like big picture and sort of like, how can we make how can we keep improving for our students? I just love that you are asking these questions about educational adequ- adequacy, about our goals, how do we improve teaching and learning? And I just, I got really excited about that. So I just wanted to give you a little shout out for, you know, for being so forward-thinking about, about these things. So.
Thank you, Danielle. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we are on 4D, and that is President's Report.
Moving.
Okay, um, I, I, it's, I, I- I, I, it's, I, I, um, I'm a little bewildered. And I'll just start with the Wozby, uh, resolutions. I hope people took a chance to read some of these, these resolutions because some of these res- for me, some of these re- resolutions go against who Glendale River Hill School District is to the core. But then there's also some stuff that, and I'm just gonna go really quickly over the ones that I have marked. You might have some other ones. Um, let's start with, um, one that I think is very important. The first one, which is the state high cost of transportation and aid. They have everything other than mandated school districts who are mandated to trans-, do transportation. And that's where we fall into. We are mandated by state law to bus every single kid and do it the way we need to. Even the kids that live across the street from Glen Hills, if their parent wanted us to pick them up, we have to because we have so many highways and, uh, freeways. We are mandated to bus. But they, oh, I believe they only reimburse us ten percent in a over million dollar budget. Everyone in this resolution, people like are in the rural areas, they're asking for rural area money because they have high populations, but they are, you know, spread out. I don't think we should be left out of this. So I will be, um, asking for an amendment to add schools that are mandated to to, um, to bus. It's almost like taxation without representation, you know, that kind of thing. The other ones that I have been looking into is I would like, um, actually Kelly, I would like you to, if you could, um, Allison, give Kelly a copy of the discipline of children with dis-, uh, disabilities. I wanna see what her opinion is on that.
Yep.
For that resolution.
I can absolutely give her a copy of it. My first thought on that was that we would support it if it's funded. But it has to be properly funded. So it can't just be an unfunded mandate.
Correct. So I was, um, so that is one that I would like some opinions on. Um, there is another one, it's the Student Lunch Program. Um, basically, it's, um, a district is saying that, I don't know how to put this, but a district is saying that executive orders or mandates shouldn't come into when funding to a school district um, for lunch school, our lunch, uh, school lunch program. And what this is, is, uh, I think the federal government has decided to not use male, female, but also add into gender identity. And they're saying that they, their district shouldn't have to, um, abide by using gender identity as one of the categories. So they want, it, it goes against what they believe, so they shouldn't have to follow the rules of the federal government. I fundamentally disagree because sometimes the federal government actually does stuff for equity. And therefore have to, it, uh, uh, it makes, it makes people have to be equitable or at least, um, acknowledge that there's more than just male, female, um, non-binary and he, she pronouns, stuff like that. I would ask you to read and give me your comments because I will be having to speak or pulling stuff out of this, these, um, these resolutions. Go ahead, Allison, with that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, do you have other ones you were gonna go through?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go through a couple more and then, um, uh, let's see here. I was taking notes and please, if I miss something, I'm a little concerned about the open enrollment one. There's some stuff that I don't like, some of the stuff I do like. But, um, I, like, I think it's great that the option of s- districts to provide transportation to non-resident students is a good thing. You know, there's some good things and then some things that I am not okay with. So I would ask Allison to deep dive into that one. And also Lindsay to see in regards to open enrollment.
Numbers that Tamika?
Um, that one was doesn't have a number. It's twenty nineteen, fourteen, thirteen.
Okay.
Colon forty-four, sixteen.
Okay.
I only have a few more, but these are.
It feels like it's smaller list this year than years past.
Oh, it is, but it isn't, um. It is, but it isn't. Um, where's the, another one? Also look at the students with this, uh, disabilities. I'm a, I don't know what to think about that, so I asked Kelly to look at that one. That is the, it's just, that's what it's titled, Students with Disabilities.
There's a learning barriers one too, right?
I'm just doing the ones that I picked up on. We might have some other ones that.
I think in being a board rep, um, you obviously have the discretion, but I appreciate the fact that you're just going out to the administration to ask for additional, uh, you know, in- information supporting these resolutions.
Um, there is a couple that I think are great, but you might not, um, asking, uh, reimbursement for private school, um, private school tr- transportation. What we do is when one of our, our districts have private school and that they're in within a five-mile radius, we reimburse their parents for taking them to school. The problem is that if they have five kids going to the same class, they, the same school, they get five reimbursements instead of one because all of them are getting in the same car and, and going. So that, that's just one that's asking to say one per household if it's, or one per household if they're going to one school, maybe two if they're going to two separate schools. Um, the public dollars, um, one I really love where they're saying keep public dollars in public schools. And to not give money to private or um, charter schools. The money should directly go to private schools. I did, those are the ones that I wanted to highlight. Um, there's more and I wanna go in-depth. Did anybody, I know if you have any other, other ones that they that thought were bad, let me know. Uh, Carla, we'll go to you and then Allison, cuz that's who, who was first on my screen when I looked up.
Okay, super fast. So I, this was a lot. I did try to read them all and then I gave up. So I looked for the ones in special ed and disability cuz I, I have a little bit more, I'm less ignorant on that topic. So just for what it's worth, it's twenty-three, oh, four, oh, five, oh, eight, and oh, nine.
Twenty-three, oh, four, oh, five, oh, eight, and oh, nine, okay?
Help Kelly if you're trying to hunt through. Um, I looked through these and poked around in them with a couple of my disability advocate friends. And bottom line, they're, they're non-controversial in our current legislative scheme. So if, I mean, they're, you, you know, like the special needs vouchers, what do they call them now? The scholarships, you know, we lost that battle. So a, a lot of these are repeals of just sort of obsolete Wozby resolutions of the past. So my view is if you wanted to just vote for those, it's, it's fine. There's nothing about them that's particularly problematic in our current.
Right, that's, and that's kind of what I'm doing. I, that's why some of them, I just, I just go, uh, but if there's something that we really wanna fight, let me put it this way. Um, besides last year and the year before, I have made the news on fighting for our district when it came to equity, when it came to some of these resolutions. Because if we look at it, there's four hundred and fifty-plus districts that come to here. But the bigger districts like Milwaukee, Dane, uh, you know, they have the most population of black and brown and we have a majority black and brown school district. But they're not listening. We only have one vote. And then other people can look and see that we, now I have stopped, even though we had a, a, not a majority, I have stopped some of these votes, especially when it came to equity to, from being passed. So the, we, I do take these seriously. I do read them. And, um, and I will really want us, when I speak, I want to reflect our district, not just me, but our district and what we stand for and what we need to get out of it, so.
So I'll give you an example. Twenty-three oh four repeals this, uh, resolution to give more power to schools to overrule parents on IEP decisions. So for instance, that's one I, I like that they're repealing that, you know, one of our equity journey pieces is to ensure that parent voices are empowered, right? Caregiver voices are empowered. So this would be an example of one that is to me, looks like a good move for Wozby moving more towards a, if part of equity is community engagement and family empowerment. This is a good resolution.
And that's why I wanna ask both because one of the things that I, I have reached out to is that sometimes the parents will not acknowledge their kids have a disability or they don't acknowledge that this is something that needs to be done. So it goes both ways with that. That's why I was kinda asking Kelly for that. You know, I know, I, I understand what you're saying, Carla, and I completely, I was okay with it until somebody brought that up and said, but what about those parents who just refuse to admit that their kid has a autism or they have something else and it's something else. So I, that's why I was a little concerned about that and I wanna kind of get the expert to see.
Yeah. I mean, from a, I, I hear you completely from a the perspective of a parent with a kid with significant disability and, you know, to me, then this is probably off-topic and maybe not the appropriate place to be talking about this, but I think we agree. To me, those kinds of issues around stigma and a family's ability to face off with those challenges, those are like broader equity conversations outside the context of IEP decision-making. Do you know what I mean? Like, how do we, how do we grow the culture in our school, create safe spaces for people to overcome stigma? How do we, um, address, for instance, the rational fear of brown and black parents, that their parents are be, that their kids are being over identified into IEPs, right? So I like any model that a- any sort of mindset and philosophy that moves us to engagement and inclusion of families in decision-making, um, from that broader perspective.
And I, I, I completely understand. Let's just, I, I, I would, so that is that's why I had a, a, a back and forth with that. Kelly, please just give me your feedback when, you know, write it up. Please let me know, um, what you think and then I will try to figure out what's for the district on that topic. Go, Allison.
Um.
Wait, uh, Kelly, hold on. Kelly, did you have something you wanted to say?
Will do. Yep.
Okay.
I'll look through, um, any of the, any of them that have to do with special education and I'll, I'll give you input. And how that impacts the district from my lens. I can share with you too cuz I just created like a cover sheet of all of them so that you'll be able to find those really easily. Um, you answered my question, Carla, because I was concerned about twenty-three oh eight because anytime I see something going around vouchers, I get nervous. And so, so you kind of answered my question about whether or not that should be something to be scary, but then Kelly can also look into that too and we figured out cuz that one just caught me, so.
Same. I, it real, I was like, wait, what? But I, I think the reality is it's very obsolete. We lost the voucher battle.
Well, there is also one of these resolutions that are asking for if we're giving voucher money, then the private schools should be required to, to have, um, those needs serviced for those kids and not sent back to the, uh, the, the public schools. They should have those, those services right there. So they're all encompassing. So there is a resolution in that as well. And yes, they will get paid for it, but it's still better than have the stigma of having a special needs child leave their school to come back to get services from the public school to just go back. So that is one of it. Anything else? Um, I read you kind of the ones. Remember to read the, if you're gonna read the, the, uh, the white packet, there's also a supplemental packet that has some changes that they have made already to some of the districts. I mean, some of the, um, the resolutions, so we wanna just, and, uh, the school board members should have gotten a packet in the mail with all this stuff in it. It's a, a Wozby packet. Anything, Danielle?
There's just, uh, a couple that, that, so universal free school meals. I think I love it. I'm not sure if there's a reason to not love it. If it's a funded, I would imagine Allison would say funded initiative. So that I would love to be very actively pro. There's a lot in here around licensure, um, a couple around counselors and social workers having an easier path to be employed by schools, which I think would be great for us to push for, I think, you know, barring any um, counterfeedback. And then a lot around licensure, which I don't have an immediate opinion on. I would assume it's trying to make things easier for schools, but I wonder if the rub to making things easier means I don't.
Quality.
Quality. Exactly. So I, I, I'd be curious to, to have administrator feedback on, on some of those resolutions cuz there's quite a, quite a few of them, I think. Um, and refer to them on those. But that's, those are the ones that stood out to me.
Uh, Ben, did you, or Ben, Andy, do you have any ones that you, I mean, cuz I really do read this and I try to put even my personal biases aside and, and go, cuz some of them I'll go hammer, but I know like personally, I don't like it, but it's better for the district. You know what I mean? So i- it's, I've had challenges doing this from time to time. Andy?
Well, I'm just gonna say that, you know, I, I try to keep, you know, this in stride and it's one thing to take a position on something, but uh, you also have to recognize that Wozby is an advocacy group and as such, they don't have any, you know, real power other than to take, you know, certain positions. And, uh, so I, I, I think that one thing that we should be working on, which, you know, I think we've talked about, uh, before and Ms. Bailey mentioned it ear- earlier. Uh, Ms. Weiss, I think you had mentioned with respect to strategic plan at one point is we should be engaging in more advocacy legislatively. Um, I think it's a good thing. Um, and, uh, I don't know what's going to happen, for example, with, uh, Alberta Darling, uh, now leaving her post, but there might be some opportunities, uh, even to those that we may view as hostile in public education. I think it's really important to start to build those bridges and to have a plan to do that. And I think that that is another avenue towards addressing these. Certainly, we speak with louder voice when we can come to consensus with other school districts throughout the state. That's very valuable. Um, but I, I think that there are things that we can also do on our own and, uh, while we should pool our resources, we should also not be afraid to develop our voice independently as well.
All right, and, uh, on that note, uh, Andy, thank you because, well, there are some good stuff. Also, the one percent sales tax to go to schools. I like that one too. The point one, I think it is point one. It might be one or one point one, but, and that would directly fund schools. Anything else on that particular thing? Next thing is superintendent evaluation. We, we, we kind of have it worked out. Um, Elliot Mojer will be conducting uh, in helping us facilitate the, the superintendent evaluation on, what is it, January? What? I can't remember the date.
I'm making that up.
Let me see.
We're both just saying numbers.
Just.
The third.
No, it's not. Is it really the third?
Yeah.
Okay, January third, um, we will be going, um, over last year's evaluation. And then, uh, just, um, her, uh, Allison showing what she did in regards to that and then making plans to, uh, seeing if we have any questions for the, the staff on their staff, uh, survey. And then after that, we will conduct our rubric because it is the board evaluation. And then he will comp, our Dr. Mojer will compile the, the information, present it to the board um, on her evaluation and then, uh, I think that's it. And then I will pre- uh, present it to um, Allison. I think that's all for that. Now, the next one is called topics for future board meetings. We have uh. I'm gonna tell you what it is and then we're gonna do it. So um. And this, in this, on our agenda, um, there was put in a policy that we have a spot where we. Talk about or bring things up that should be on a future board meeting. Um, this is the time for the board to say what they want. Um. To be on a future board meeting and make it clear it's future board meeting, not next board meeting, depending on what we have and how we're doing it. Um, that is clearly because it might go into another. Like, for instance, we're doing salaries in February, Feb- January, February, so if someone said we want to talk about salaries. If it is cohesive for us to do it in the February when we're talking about it, it will be in a future board meeting and we will tell you when it is. That is how I read it, that is what it said. Yes, it does. I mean, I read it, rewrite it and I made sure. That that's what it said and it didn't say next future board meeting. Um, it is just a future topic and if we can justify why it can't, doesn't have to be on the next one. Then that's kind of how it's gonna roll, I guess. So with that being said, um. Do now.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So. I guess my understanding of the policy was that a, a board member could ask for a topic to be brought up. At a specific meeting, because if a board member can ask for a topic to be brought up anytime in the future. And administration or the president can say, sure, seven months from now, three months from now, two months from now, doesn't that kind of defeat?
Two separate things, two separate things, Danielle. So the, 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 the thing you're talking about is say. You want something on a, a board meeting. And you say, and you get another person to say, I want this on the board, the next agenda, it will say, we are taking. A vote to see if it's going to be on the next board agenda. That is. That particular topic. These are topics that you want the board to talk about at some point. Those are two separate. Um, four topics and they are both separate uh, in the, the policy as well.
Sorry, that's, I don't under, I don't, that doesn't make sense to me, sorry.
Okay, let me start over then. So, when we were talking originally when we were doing policy. We were talking about how if a board president or superintendent doesn't. Want something on the agenda, okay? A board member like, say you want flies on the agenda. I say no, Allison says no, you get another board member like Carla to say, no, I want, I want it to be brought to a vote. So this would, this would go on to next agenda and that agenda would say. These two board members want to have this on our next board meeting, so. We're gonna vote to see if you want to put it on the board agenda. That is how you have to vote first to say that you want it on the agenda. And then it will go on to the following agenda. That is how it was explained to me by. The WASB rep and our attorneys. This, this particular one is. Just in general, somebody wants something on an agenda. You know, uh, you want to talk about cows. Okay, this will be put on another board uh, meeting and we will figure out when to put it on meeting. So those are two separate things.
I, okay, does, am I, now, can I ask Allison if that's how she unders- understood it? Because. My understanding was a board member would say, I want to talk about this at the next meeting. And then all we're limited to in this meeting tonight, if I say I want to talk about cows hypothetically at the next meeting. Then we say as a board, we vote tonight, yes or no, we want that to be on the next agenda as a discussion item. That's how I understood it. So you're saying that's incorrect.
That's how I understood it too, though. So I don't know if I'm looking at it the wrong way.
I, maybe I'm reading it wrong, because that is, they are two, they're two separate things. Because if, if, this is why I under, I believe that they're two separate things. We don't need to have. Future topics on if we don't have an agreement, if we don't have a disagreement about what we're putting it on. If. This is where we're saying anybody who wants to bring something up on a future board meeting, they can. Anybody, board, uh, but that's one separate issue. What we are talking about is if we, you do not, I say Allison says, or president. And the superintendent says, we don't want to put that on the agenda. You get another person to say, we want a vote on if it should go on the agenda.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. I don't think we wanted to do, I think we were just talking about the first one, the simple one. Like, I want this on the agenda and then you guys vote yes or no.
Where we talk about, we could talk about it and agree, but if we don't agree, we can have a vote. Okay, I don't.
Right, we're gonna, I think we need to table this then, because I read the policy differently and. And, and, and we're gonna still do what is gonna be on the agenda, but I think we're having a issue with what I understand. And I could be completely wrong, so don't, I'm not saying I'm right, but I think I, I read it over and I thought I understood that clearly.
You see how everybody else understands it? Because. I think there are two different things. I just don't think that we were trying to address the other one, where the disagreement one, right now.
I thought we were, and that's what I'm saying. I didn't believe we were doing the disagreement one right now.
Okay.
I thought we were just putting on anybody who had a topic. That wanted to be put on the agenda, we could tell, people could tell us what they want. This is not the disagreement on the agenda item. That's, they're two separate things.
But are, are, we have a policy now that says board members can, can ask for. Topics to be put on future agenda, so I just have to look at that policy. I'm not.
But I will, I, I, but what I'm saying is. This particular thing we're talking about right here is just in general, this is gonna be on every agenda item. In saying. A future topic. And that is, is not with the board, it's just anybody, or you could say, hey, I want flies on here. What I'm taught, what your policy, I think you're mixing up, is the policy where. Allison and I both say we don't want to put flies on there, we bring it to the board and say, we want to put this on agenda.
Oh, that's between you two. That's if you two disagree, but this is.
Right, and then it's you, and you ask me if I want to put something on, Allison and I both say, no, we don't want it on. You can ask another board member and that's why it goes on to the, the agenda. There's two separate policies. There are two separate policies. Uh, Carla?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna have to go look at the. Policy. I've been sitting here trying to find it. I can't find it. I, I don't know where.
Share it, Allison, do you have easy access?
But if, what I hear you saying to me.
Topic for future board meeting.
I've heard you said two things that I don't remember reading into the policy at all. One is the idea that if. If the board votes and says we want this topic on the agenda, that then you and Allison could say, well, at some future meeting. It will be on the agenda.
No, no, Carla, that's not what I meant by that. Wait, wait, let me explain that part, so I can.
Well, just let me finish. So I, I don't think that's what the policy says, but I, I can't find it right now, sitting here and I'm really. And number two, um. I, I guess my, my concern about this is that the hope of a, of a provision like this is to. Engage in dialogue, not to have like this super technical kind of process. And so I, I'm troubled at the idea that it's gonna be this like technical, we'll bring it on this agenda and that agenda. I mean, the hope of an item like this on an agenda, I hope would be that we can have a dialogue about what board members want to have on the agenda. Right? I mean, we're just five people. So, so that's, that's my, generally, that's my wish, right? Is that we could just have a friendly dialogue with the five of us, what we want on the next agenda, rather than having it become. Very technical and parliamentary. And if we were a body of fifty, then I would understand why we would, we would need to be technical, but for instance, today, a topic came up. Um, Andy brought up a question about whether we ought to have access to the, the raw data in a survey. Do we really need to bring it up today, bring it up the next meeting, have a technical vote, or can it be something we discuss here and then? You know, just get through it informally and just decide whether it's gonna be on the agenda.
And that's why there's two, they're two separate things and I will go look, but my understanding was, this was just. A separate thing, like this is exactly, the, the one that we're talking about now is exactly what you're talking about. Like, things that come up that we don't, you know, we may forget and we want to add to it. So it's a list of things that we should put on the agenda. That, that's, that is an open dialogue for just us to put stuff on the agenda and, and, and make sure we, we do it. The other one was a separate issue and it, it's under. It's under the, the policy of who does the agenda. That's where it is. It's under that policy.
All in that.
So it's two, yeah, so it's two different, it's two different things.
Yeah, there it is. You're right, I mean, it doesn't say that we will. Well, it doesn't say who decides when the future item is, so I think that's just part of the discussion. Should we just see how it goes?
But that, i- it's two different things. That is only when we have a disagreement. What we have on the agenda tonight is just getting topics that may be wanting. People want on the agenda, not for the next one, but just in general, I want to see this, or I want to see that, and then we can plan. For it. This is separate from this.
Okay, I think it could be for the next one. If I make a specific request for something to happen in a specific meeting, we discuss that.
And we could, it could be. It's just.
I'm hoping to see how it goes. I'm hoping to see where it goes.
Alright, let's go to uh. For E, topics of future board meetings. Does anybody have a topic on a future board? Carla?
Yeah, I, I want us to have a discussion and a vote on access to the raw data. On the uh, surveys by the Donovan Group.
We, yeah, we already said we were gonna do that in January.
Well, we talked about it, we said maybe, I wasn't sure. I, I just want to bring it up. This is a place for a conversation about it. I would love to see it on the agenda.
Danielle?
Do we vote on it now?
No. It'll just go in. I mean, it's discussion.
I mean, I guess if Tamika said she didn't want it on there, then.
We can't deliberate. Yeah, it's just whether.
Please stop you, it's, it's not me, it's president, it's because the president, it's not me as a person. It's the position, so I may not be here, so it's whoever is in this position. I may not be president next term, so it's whoever is in the position, not necessarily me.
I know that, but you're the president right now, so that's why I used your name. I apologize.
Okay.
I misunderstood the rule.
Okay, go ahead, Danielle.
I would like to propose that the board discuss and possibly take action at our next meeting in January to move to a committee of the whole. I would lower my hand.
Anything else?
Alright, I'll second it, since you made a motion.
Discussion? Sorry, I usurped you there, Tamika.
Discussion.
Wait, why are we voting now?
I don't know, uh, discussion. It's gonna.
Whether we'll talk about it, right?
No, we're gonna put it on the agenda. That's the differences between the two places. You, you said what you wanted to. Uh, there's no real issue why it shouldn't be on. There are other issues where there could be a reason why something is not on agenda, you may not agree, so therefore we have to bring it to the board. Other than that, you just asked for a request. I don't think we have ever not put something. On an agenda that wasn't asked.
Okay, so just when. Then, if it's up to you and Allison and that's how you want this to go, can you guys confirm that you'll put that on the agenda in January?
Let's vote, because we, we have a vote here. All in favor to put. Committee of the uh, whole discussion on the agenda.
And possible action.
And possible action. Please, vote aye. Nay?
Question.
Five to zero. Motion passes.
Questions before the vote.
Wait, 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 no, no, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, why are we voting on this one but not the li- like, is it because there was a disagreement?
I think it's because Danielle said I move.
Okay, alright.
Okay, sorry.
To, since we're starting a precedent and we started a precedent, can I have a motion to put on the agenda? Uh, the raw data.
Oh.
For um, next meeting.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Andy, second by Carla. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. I obviously, like we said, would like to keep it uh, so that users who've taken it can feel anonymous, so. Um, but, but yes.
No, this is a vote on having the discussion on that at the.
Oh, sorry. I'm tired.
Any more discussion?
I will clarify though, that my motion was, you know, to have discussion, possible action.
Yes, we know.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion moves five to zero. Okay, next, and I just realized that my camera keeps going in and I, I am not. Turning my camera off, I just don't know what it is, so.
Making faces at us.
Oh, no, I would make faces on camera, you know me.
I know you would.
Um, no, I just don't know, it's me going in and out and I don't know why. Maybe it'll come back on. So the next is five A, policy work, second reading. So we are going to, um, is Jenica still on?
Yes, she is.
Okay, um, Allison, what I would like you to do is explain. What was different from the first reading to the second reading? Um, for each of the policy, you know, because we had the first reading and then we had some tweaks. And then. Just to point out, so.
It's highlighted, okay.
It's all highlighted.
Okay, so I know that Jen and Jenica had a conversation, um, so I'm just gonna pull them up. So three sixty-one.
And this one's just your changes.
Alright, so this is not the one you guys did?
No, no, I'm just saying this is the, these are the changes you made. But we didn't need to edit any of them.
Oh, so three sixty-one was, you guys worked on three thirty?
Yeah, but.
Three sixty-one, they, we, wait, hold on, we pulled it out, Justin, we wanted to do any changes, there was no changes made. So it's the same as the first reading.
No, I think this is different from the first reading. Allison made changes.
So at policy, these are. Based on policy committee. Some of the changes that were made.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So it was to remove that line. Uh, we had a discussion about relevant research um, versus putting a specific theory. And talked about, so we had some debate around that. Um, one of the recommendations that Ben had from the first reading was to add formative and summative assessments. So we're totally fine with adding that piece. Um, these are highlighted recommendations, I think these were all yours, Ben, that Jenica was fine with. So engaging students with the content, um, adding in subject areas and then the explicit instruction and differentiation piece. Instead of personalized.
I thought that sentence read weird, by the way, with the explicit instruction. I wasn't sure what it was saying. The pursuit of. Learning objectives.
Stand to which.
So when you go down textbooks and other instructional materials and resources for use in the classroom, consideration shall be given to each of the following fact. Consideration shall be given to each of the following factors. So then this factor was the extent to which the materials facilitate differentiated instruction. And the pursuit of learning objectives to explicit instruction and differentiation. Yeah, that does read funny, including the extent to which the materials can help members of the instructional staff accommodate different. Learning targets. So at the extent to which the materials facilitate different. It's, I think it's almost in the pursuit of learning objectives.
You, it's the two. Are you trying to say, what, is that clause just in the right, wrong place? Like, is it? And the pursuit of explicit instruction and, oh, I see what you mean. It's duplicative.
To the extent.
I know what it's, I think I remember Ben talking about. I think it should say. The extent to which the materials facilitate explicit instruction and differentiation. In the pursuit of learning objectives. Is that right, Ben?
Yeah, yeah, I think maybe it just went in the wrong spot.
Take all that out, oh, in, in the pursuit. Of learning objectives.
Yep.
And then delete to, yeah, there, okay.
Yeah, okay, that, I think that's right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, for some reason that bullet points not, that's okay.
And that bullet point needs to go, right? Right there. Delete, delete. And a comma instead of the period.
Okay, sorry about that. So that was three sixty one. Did anybody else have any other? Concerns on three sixty one? Is, is this the policy for which there might be several rules associated? Waiting on, okay. Yep, Jenica's still working on the rules for January.
Okay. And I believe because we, and I believe because precedent, we have. Um, we have approved the rules as well. Yeah, we'll just have to approve them, but I, since it's not a policy, I think we can just directly bring them to the board instead of having a, a first and second reading.
That sounds good.
Okay, all in favor, I may have a motion to pass three sixty one as policy.
So moved.
Moved by Ben. I don't know who this, who was the second one? Carla? Second by Carla, any discussion? Any discussion by the audience? I can't see who is here now be, hold on, I gotta.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I just, oops, now I, I don't know where it happened. Going once, going twice. Closed. Any more discussion with the board? All in favor of passing three sixty one?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Staying. Motion passes five to zero. Next is.
I don't know if you have to note that two twenty-three was approved in consent.
Yes, we, we, yeah, just note it.
Okay. Alright, so then here comes.
Uh-oh, hold on. Three thirty.
Hey, Jenica, I'm happy to see you back. Cause I know you and Ben worked extensively on this one. Alright, so here's three thirty. I'll just stop at the highlights if you guys wanna. Actually, I don't think we, those were all changes from policy, weren't they? That was for Ben, I think.
Okay.
Feedback, I mean.
Yeah, we talked about a policy, but then we just made the change.
So everybody's good with that?
The, I really like the revisions to this one. So for me, well done. I, I liked this new paragraph here, the way it's written.
Yeah, we, we broke it out into two paragraphs. It was, it was a little, yeah. Which paragraph? Are you talking about the big one now that's on the screen? Yeah, it was. Changed? Mm-hmm. How was it changed? Um, we added that, um. We kept in that, we added, um, staff members have the opportunity to appeal curricular changes or inactions following the district appeal process. So just to the district's appeal process. And then we also changed. Uh, where is it?
Yeah, I don't, it was up there. We, it was some, we, maybe, man, I can't remember.
Gonna put a paragraph together.
Yeah.
I remember there was a concern about the language around administrators being able to, um. Stop offering a course without obtaining. A curricular area with, without obtaining board approval. And so the language has been modified there.
I think we added and shall be, um, made aware.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, but that's. Board shall be made aware.
Hold on, one at a time, please. Danielle, go.
So this doesn't, to me, this doesn't drastically change, uh, change that paragraph. All it does is says like, if you want to. And I'm, I'm using like big hypotheticals because this is where, this is where my issue is, is that we're not. Before there was language in here to say, um, you can specifically sort of draw out more distinction. If you choose to as a district and we're just keeping the language very general. So for example, uh. Cutting, uh, the music program one semester, for example, cutting GT. Uh, these things could be done by the administration and, and maybe there's nothing to. That's a discussion in and of itself, but those could be done and then you could tell us after the fact. So it doesn't require board approval. And I tried to make the point in our meeting that I don't know exactly where. The lines exist between board and just, and, and administration when it comes to making some of these like. Obviously, curricular guides, that doesn't seem like that's a board, you know, that's a, that's a teaching and learning. That makes sense. But pro, but it, you know, it says, uh, I mean. A particular course, class, curricular activity. Yeah, I just need some more definition. I need more cut, like, I need more explicit understanding of what. The delineation is of roles to feel comfortable approving this because otherwise. I don't know if we're giving away power that a board is supposed to have. Or taking, you know, I just. I, I was hoping to have like a better understanding of how, how the administration views this and how this might be utilized, but without that, I'm not. I'm not comfortable with this policy as it is. Right now.
Hold on, uh, Ben.
So generally, like, okay, so e- especially in a high school. Like I, I ran my own elective course. Right? I was also a math teacher, but I ran an elective course. One, one time my elective course couldn't be run. Because not enough kids signed up for it. Uh, and that was a decision that they made. Um, and yeah, is that disappointing? Yeah, uh, but it's not like, but I still got to teach a math class, right? Cause I'm a math teacher. So in place of that, you know, you, so anyway. But so they're not gonna eliminate a math class because you know, that's state law, right? You, you can't eliminate music. Uh, and so. The way, so I, I do know that although it sucks and I, I do think. You know, again, like. There's a reason why people run the classes they do. Um, this at least, cause like, it, you know. This at least gives the teacher when they read this policy, you know, if, let's say something like this happens. Where they say, okay, great, I know I can appeal this. And so then it comes up to us. Um. And I, I don't know, I thought that was.
Um.
De, like a decent compromise at least.
I, and the, the, the thought process for me when we were doing this is that. We want them to be able to do programming and curriculum like base stuff. Because, and they are the expert at it. When you change the core. A core thing like music was a core thing and we didn't know about it kind, I mean, we kinda knew about it, but didn't know about it until after the fact. Um, my understanding was we're gonna let you. Like, like the, the situation that Ben is talking about. Or doesn't need to know about that. I mean, cause it's just, it's a administrative. Thing where not enough kids were there and so therefore. But if it's a core. Uh, like music or, or art or something like, or, or dropping a core class or core. Piece of the education, I thought, from my understanding, that's what I thought that. It needed to have board approval. Go ahead, uh, Allison.
I was just gonna say that I think some of that is just baked into the fact that there's DPI regulations around. Those core sub, like you have to have certain amount of minutes of X, Y, and Z at certain grade levels. And so. District administrators have to follow those.
I get that.
Around minutes, you know, like we couldn't just say we're not doing science in third grade. You know what I mean? Like there's.
Yeah. Understand that, but I'm just, let's go back to what happened with the music program and it was. Change, yes, it was within the guidelines, but it was a, a big fundamental change. On how music was done before, right, wrong and different. I'm not saying that at all. It's just that that was done, music program was changed. People were in uproar. We didn't know about it until basically right at the end. So I guess. I don't know where our line is drawn when it comes to boards stepping in to. You know, to let you guys do your jobs, but where do the board come in it? I just, I don't know.
So my, my suggestion is that we do have the opportunity to be explicit to a degree here. And so the. Programs and areas of study is, must be what the law defines as the board, where our board approval. Our scope of power lies. But then we have, uh, course, class or curricular activity. Sounds like that's within administrative, but there has to be gray area. There is nuance. And so. I think this paragraph could do better at carving out or speaking to the nuance or specific. Programs or courses that we see as fundamental, even if they, I don't know. So I'm, I'm just thinking that. There's a little more work to be done there to ensure that. Not even just us, but like future board members, future, you know, any other administrator would. Understand this area, it wouldn't become like a. It wouldn't become a struggle. It could be clearer. That's my point, so. Do you? I'm looking at, so the sentence that I just bolded, like, and I don't know, I could be wrong. So I'm wondering, does that? Does that say that? So district administration, administration and building principals can decide without board approval. Whether a particular course or class or activity is offered. But it's within the programs in the courses and areas of study that have been approved by the board. So if the. I, does that make sense? And I don't know if it's as clear as it needs to be, but in some ways I kinda read that like. So we can in a trimester say, oh, we're gonna have this, we're gonna do African drums. With the approved music program that the board has, like the board isn't gonna say what kind of, do you know what I'm saying? I don't know, it could be, I could just.
I think we're getting into the weeds a little bit.
Salvage the whole thing by saying, uh, the board shall, uh, instead of saying the board shall be made aware of any change. Uh, just to say, uh, that the administrator can make a decision about offering course. Uh, so comma, subject to board approval instead of the. Uh, board should be made aware of any, uh, charges.
Just say. That's what they're trying to say that they don't want, we don't wanna have to have board approval for everything like so. In this case of going back to Ben's example, they wanna drop. You know, a, the one kid comes in and they wanna do the math class when they thought it was gonna be fifty kids. They may drop that. Because it's only one kid. But the way you said it, they would have to bring it back to the board to approve it. Rather than just dropping it and trying to find an alternative for the kid. Um. And this is.
I mean, I could do some reas, I'm just, it doesn't feel like it's, I hate to, to do this, but to say that it's second reading. Ready if we're, if more than I am not clear on this part. I think. It might be an easy fix, but we could look at other policies, but it's, I think it's just a matter of, of adding some clarity.
Yeah, I thought, I mean, I guess the way I interpreted it was that, um. Like the music situation was different, but I guess I see what you're saying because, I mean, it does say within the program. And among the various courses and areas of study that have been approved by the board. So you couldn't. Eliminate music from the curriculum. Based on what that says. However, we didn't. And we made a big change to it. And so I, I guess to your point. Then technically, Dr. Mosher didn't have to bring that to us.
So why don't we do this? Could we just, uh, why, the, the thing to do is this, right? The board can always act regardless of what the policy says. So the board could always, you know, uh, override a decision. So why don't we just keep it with notice? Alright, um, and but give a timeframe, right? That, uh, so that the board should be made aware of any changes. Uh, within a sufficient, and you can keep it elastic. Be made aware of any changes, comma, within a time period. So something like within a time period to, uh, reasonably, you know, uh.
Take action.
Within a reason, yeah, within a time period reasonable enough, take action or within time. With, uh, within enough time for the board to take action if necessary.
Like, do we really? Sorry.
Are you finished, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead Danielle.
Sorry, I get, I just, I don't wanna get into, my goal is not to overstep or micromanage and I don't wanna say that they have to notify us. To approve a course that has no students in it. So again, it's kind of like. I don't, I see what you're saying and maybe it solves the problem, but I think it needs a little bit more thought than. My brain personally at nine forty is going to give it right now, but.
And I am not comfortable with the language. Me personally, I'm not comfortable with this right now. Um. I don't know why it doesn't, it's not what the intent was supposed to be when it was in policy. Something has changed. I don't know, is this whole paragraph added?
No, no, pretty much the same as it was.
But something has changed that it, for me, it's changing the meaning of it and I can't put my finger on it. Right? Because it's nine something. Um, let's, I don't know. So I guess. Let's have a motion, or do you wanna, does anybody wanna make a motion to? Work on it and then just bring it back to the next board meeting rather than policy, cause it doesn't really necessarily need to go back to policy. Andy?
Yeah, so just very quickly, then, you know, we make motion, we make a motion. Right now, the only two possible is I can see for why administration will wanna do that are low enrollment. Uh, and I don't know, maybe, you know, teacher availability, right? Um, we lose a teacher, teacher loses qualifications or. You know, we can't get someone in there quick enough. And so something has to be done to, you just can't offer a course. So for example, music. Right? Um, if it's a choir, you know, class, you can't teach, uh, offer choir class unless someone has, you know, proper credentials. So why don't we just write in the circumstances under which, uh, you know, uh, Ms. Weiss or, uh, anyone else can cancel. Which are, you know, for low enrollment or teacher unavailability and call it a day and then not worry about anything else.
Cause I think you should have more leeway than that.
What?
I would wanna give them more leeway than that.
Well, then, I, I, I'm gonna just make that motion and intervene in motion table.
What, what motion are you making in?
I'm making motion table this until, uh, you know, we, until the next meeting.
Second, who's going to?
Hold on.
Work on it? I seconded.
Motion, I'm doing this for Carla, cause she, she does like it when she, for the, the minutes. That's why I do this. Motion approved, I mean, uh, motion by Andy, seconded by Ben. Discussion.
Who, who's going to work on it? And like what, what exact feedback are you taking in now? So like what, what are we asking her to change? We're saying more specific about like which programs we're talking about or?
I, for me, for, I'll just give you what I think. I think it should be. Broader, but more specific in the sense of, and I'll tell you what I mean by that. Broader in the sense of you got, we don't need specifics on programming or anything like that. We may wanna be specific on core classes or things that will be relevant like. We may want to be specific on core classes or things that will be relevant, like. Um, program or changes in the whole. A program. Like, we changed, music was still there, but we changed the program, and it was a big deal, even though we changed it around and. It still meets the requirements, but the program itself was changed. So I guess maybe we 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 talk about program changes within, that's what I would like to see in there. Then maybe approval, but other than that, it's up to the administration to do the day to day stuff. But that is a fundamental of a change in the scheduling. And teachers, we had to hire a new teacher, there was a lot of things that were going on with that program. That that one music pro change.
So I would be happy to work with Jenica on it, and I think I would ask to maybe. I I will reach out to one of you guys just to give me more details on exactly what happened. With music, because I think that would help me understand maybe. Some of the language we want to put in here. Understanding of it.
And one other thing is you can also, like, try to work on it. With Jenica, and we have a couple of weeks, so we can put it into the update. And we can have feedback within the update, so like, the the first update we'll do in January, you could probably come up with something. And then we can give feedback on the updates.
Nope, perfect.
And then by the time the meeting actually happens, we will should be set. Uh, who, I think, one, Danielle?
I just had a, I don't know if it was an aha moment, or if I'm very tired, but language to the effect of. When, uh, like, when you change a class curricular activity or course, and it significantly alters a program or course of study. You will provide notice, then use Andy's language around providing sufficient notice, reasonable notice. Uh, to the board to provide feedback or take action, etc. I think that may address it all, because it gives you the discretion, like, you're gonna know. If you're, if what you're doing might significantly alter a program, even though it remains within those. Within the program guidelines or within the law, and then it's it's trust and it's good faith, but it would be. If we all have that shared understanding, then. I think, you know, I, so, okay, that's it, I'm done. Expanding on what you said, Danielle, so that significant significantly alter. You could even then add some things like, for example, staffing changes, or some of the things that you said were big changes. That had to happen.
Yeah, okay, so we are going to, uh, any other discussion, so we can um have Allison work on this. Let's do a vote, all in favor? Posed, abstentions, vote passes, or motion passes five to zero to table until next meeting. Okay, um. My favorite part, visitor participation, six A. Visitors may speak on any non-agenda item at this time, state law and or board policy may limit. The school board's response. Going once. Going twice. Visitor participation is closed, do have a motion to adjourn. Danielle, moved by Danielle, seconded by Ben. Any discussion, all in favor?
I have gifts, come get your gifts.
Allison, what time is the thing at Parkway tomorrow?
Um, it's eight o'clock, I believe.
So what time do you, should I be there?
So eight o'clock's the sing-along, eight thirty-ish is pancakes.
Alright, so I will be there around quarter to eight to hang out with you and do some pancake making.
Sounds good.
Hi, everyone.